All right, you're live tonight.
Great. I would like to call to order the special meeting for March 29th, 2021. I'll go ahead with the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, let's see, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance first. Do you have a flag for us this evening, Jonathan? Great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, great. And as we meet tonight, let us all remember that today we are stewards of land that has been home to indigenous people for thousands of years before the recent arrival of the European heritage dominant culture. We honor this land's ancestors as we go about our business today. And the special meeting was called to continue a hearing. Sorry, guys, I've got trouble with my computer. Sorry about that. To continue a meeting with the deliberations regarding middle housing and its file number 2020-37. So I'm going to go ahead and read the legislative script regarding reopening this meeting. I would like to reopen the public hearing and the legislative amendments to the Hoodover zoning code related to middle housing file number 2020-37 and ordinance 2061. This is a continuation of the public hearing first opened on March 8th and continued to March 15th. At the March 15th hearing, public comment was closed and the hearing was continued for council deliberations on the draft regulations. There will be no public testimony tonight. For tonight's hearing, we will first hear from the staff. The council will deliberate the proposed regulations. We may choose to continue the hearing prior to rendering a decision. Our decision, however, is not final until it is reduced to writing and officially issued. All of our decisions are final and when the written decision is issued, may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. That is it by way of the procedural introduction for tonight's hearing. If anyone has any procedural issues to raise as we go forward, feel free to raise your hand and ask them during the hearing. Let's see, and our city attorney is here. And if there are procedural questions, I will likely be referring those to our city attorney. We will go ahead now and hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to queue up a presentation for you, short one for tonight's matter. Hopefully you're seeing that. As mentioned, this is the continuation of a public hearing for 202037 and the purpose of tonight's meeting is to allow for council deliberation on the draft regulations. For those just joining in, the attached code work is a part of your city council's 2020 work plan. And the purpose of the legislative amendment is to establish a clear process and regulatory framework to allow a greater diversity of needed housing types that would be implemented in a standalone code under unified regulations for uses permitted outright, such as duplexes, single-family homes or townhouses in some form in each of our residential zones. That would be reviewed under clear and objective standards through expedited review processes. Tonight will be the 14th public meeting since the, this project was initiated through the work plan. We've already reviewed the staff report and the summary as well as several modifications. So tonight I wanted to follow up with some issues that were raised or re-raised in your last meeting. As updated since your, or is updated since the last meeting and in the code, we now have the following changes incorporated in the draft legislation. Landscape area now includes the term naturally preserved to address and credit natural areas that are incorporated into site designs. The interior building separation was changed from 10 feet to six feet between exterior walls. Required parking is now a minimum of one space per dwelling unit and the rounding provision that was initially in the code has been eliminated. The outright prohibition of short-term rentals has been removed from the regulations and regulations will rely on our current licensing requirements. And another issue that was raised, not really in the code, but in response to some public commentary was in regards to water and sewer capacity. So based on our city water management plan and conservation plan, the city not only has the ability to meet the current daily demand and peak supply of water demands with our existing water system, but the system has significant excess capacity, well in excess of our 20-year planning horizon. And the firm supply, including our water rights, is many times over the projected and any forecasted need of the city. Similar, our water and sewer capacity for wastewater treatment is in excess of our peak wastewater demands with no treatment capacity issue identified for the foreseeable future. For tonight and included in your packet, there were a number of issues relating to regulations that council wished to continue deliberation. These include the clarification that regulations will and allowances for short-term rentals in middle housing to be developed in the C1 zone, subject to license regulations. There's no real change indicated in the code. The discussion of an added regulation to allow the reduction of site area requirements for dwellings under 800 square feet within the R1 zoning designation, similar to regulations that are now included in the other residential zones. This is a section A of the code. The clarification that the six-unit development cap in the R1 zone could be comprised of two-unit duplexes and/or single-dwelling cottages. Discussion regarding the restriction of parking between dwellings and street frontages. Clarification that developments are required to take access from an alley may be allowed a second access point. Clarification that smaller dwelling units, 800 square feet or less, as indicated in the code, would also be allowed the 300-square-foot bonus to accommodate a garage similar to the larger units. Clarification that conversions in sites that add dwelling units while maintaining the existing dwelling would be allowed to maintain their pre-existing driveways and access points. And a discussion regarding the amendment relating to the periodic review and reporting of middle housing construction and development, which is currently not in the code. That's my way of roundup. Absolutely, I'll be here for available questions while you deliberate.
Great, thank you, Dustin. Prior to getting into our deliberations, is there any immediate questions for Dustin? And Dustin, could you leave that, that last slide up that had all those, thank you so much? If everyone can see that, because I think we'll be referring to that to some extent during the discussions. Megan.
Yeah, thanks Dustin. I guess I have a quick question on the dwellings 800 square feet and less would have a 300-foot garage. Is that, does the garage itself have to be 300 feet? And maybe this is true for the, you know, 1,200 square foot units as well? Or does it just say if you have any level of garage, you get an additional 300 feet?
That would be up to, up to 300 square feet. So typical garage would be 200 square feet in size. If you added another five feet for some level of storage, that, that would really accommodate a 300.
But I guess so, I'm asking like if you say I'm building a 700-square-foot house, I have a 200-square-foot garage. Do I just get an additional 300 or do I only get what the garage itself is?
It's only for the garage. So a 700-square-foot unit, you would be allowed, or this would consider a 300-square-foot garage to be added.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions from anyone right now? Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. So for the second bullet, Dustin, can you give us, give us a kind of a clarification or an example of what that, what that would mean?
So in your R2, R3 and C1 zones, there's a, an area benefit or an area reduction that would be allowed if someone were to propose and develop smaller units, those under 800. Currently, the code doesn't include that same, that same allowance in the R1 zone, basically has anything under, you know, 1,200 square feet. It falls under the code. It doesn't have an additional incentive for increasingly small units. And I believe there was a discussion of should we consider, or did you want to consider that also in the R1 zone? To where there would be an added benefit for smaller dwelling units, those under 800 square feet within the R1 zoning designation.
And I guess is it just a quick follow-up for the third bullet? How do those two things relate, if at all?
And they, I don't think they're really related. The, the R1 regulations now limit the number of units that can be attached into a single building. It also has a limit to the number of total dwellings. I think there was just discussion of whether it needed to be clarified that you could use duplexes or would you have to be limited to cottages in R1? So this is just a clarification of whether you could accommodate or fulfill all six units in a duplex configuration, not just in a single-family cottage.
So then on a 5,000-square-foot site, you could put duplexes, how many duplexes?
In R1? If you ended up with a 5,000-square-foot site in R1, you could do one duplex or two dwellings.
Thank you.
It's one unit per 2,500 square feet, correct Dustin?
That is correct.
And that's why you could do a duplex or two, two separate units.
Right, attached duplex, one single attached duplex or two small cottages.
And currently you can do a single-family home and, and one accessory dwelling unit.
Correct. If you, if you had a legally established R1 lot on 5,000 square feet, you would be entitled to one single-family dwelling plus one accessory dwelling unit up to 800 square feet.
I just want to clarify one thing. When you say six-unit development cap, that just means if you have a lot big enough to do six units. If you only had a 5,000-square-foot lot in an R1 zone, you could not do six units. I just want to clarify that, correct?
That's correct. You would still eat the, the 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit regardless of the size. So if you wanted to propose a six-dwelling project, you would need 15,000 square feet.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah. Can you explain what the text change in section A would be to do the 800-square-foot bonus in R1? In R1, because I can't figure it out.
In, in the chart, in your, in your code, there would just have to be a new addition that 800 square feet would be allowed a certain area size, similar, it would be parallel to what's shown in R, excuse me, R2 and R3.
So it'd be like that parenthetical thing after the square feet per unit?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sharing, I'm sharing code right now, so I have to. Or I'm, I'm sharing the screen, let me. I will return to your, your list. So the parenthetical is correct. So similar to R2, R3, there's an 800 square feet and under would be allowed at a different area rate.
Gotcha. Thanks.
So I don't know, it would be here. I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Yeah, we, we can see it. It would basically say the same thing as the R2 says.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
You'd have a different dwelling per square foot. The square foot would obviously be higher than the R2, R3 and C1.
Yeah, that you would have the opportunity to set the number.
I do think while we're right here, there's a comma and another parentheses missing in those other two, three sections there, so. Because it should say 800 square feet and under, comma, one dwelling per 1,500 for 800 to 1,200 square feet parentheses and then, and parentheses. Is that, am I reading that right?
There shouldn't be a parentheses after under.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that works too.
I think that would make it clearer if it was stated that way.
I, I guess beyond this question right here, I'm assuming once we have figured out the big picture stuff, this will be gone through with, you know, the editorial lens.
Megan, could you just get a smidgen closer to your microphone? Thanks. You're kind of underwater there. We can't quite make everything out. Thanks.
Paper in front of me. I was just saying that I, that once, once we have the big, you know, stuff figured out that we can go through with the editorial ends of punctuation and whatnot. But I don't think that needs to be in a public meeting, so.
Yeah, I think there, there are some other punctuation and capitalization that isn't quite consistent through the whole thing, but we could state those, but they aren't substantive changes. It's just capitalization or commas or whatever. But let's get through the substantive stuff. Other questions for Dustin? Tim?
So Dustin, with respect to the second bullet, you said that we would have the opportunity to set the number. Do you have a recommended number? For that? For the bonus?
I haven't provided a record, recommended number. I would presume it would be greater than, or it'd be graduated just like the, the R1 or R2.
So this, this kind of, this came from me and I kind of did the math of like if you did a, you know, the density bonus that gets you one more unit on a standard 7,000-square-foot lot, it would be like a unit every 2,250 square feet instead of 2,500. That would give you like the equivalent bonuses what we have in the R2 or 3, C1, but, but at the lower density first in R1.
So as a procedural question then, I mean, is that something that we need to determine tonight? Or do we, is that something that happens later?
Dan, do you want to weigh in?
When you adopt the ordinance, make your final decision, all these details have to be pinned down. And so what I recommend is, as you deliberate, I think it's appropriate to do straw polls or something on each of these elements to figure out where a majority of counselors are, so you can kind of distill a total package that has some semblance of majority support. So the, the official final vote would be on an ordinance that includes everything. But all these details you should pin down through these sorts of straw polls as you deliberate. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
And I might add, Mayor, only those that you want changed from the code that we, that you have in front of you. Those are the ones that we will need direction from so that we can prepare the final ordinance.
Okay. Additional questions for Dustin? I don't see anyone raising their hands. All right. So I'm going to try and keep tallies as we go through these things. And I know, let's, let me finish my hearing script here. Prior to council deliberations, we've asked staff for questions, so we've done that. There may be additional questions, of course, as we get into deliberations, more clarification, but we'll leave that for now. We have a list of issues that were raised in our prior hearing to be addressed as part of council's deliberation. These issues were listed in our packets that we received. At the end of this evening, I'll be looking for a motion to close the public hearing and direct staff to prepare the final regulations and ordinance for reading at our April 12th meeting, if we get through these and we come to conclusion. So does anyone have anything that we talked about last time that are on page two of your packet that we kind of came to consensus or conclusion on that people have had second thoughts about from how they voted the first time around? I mean, we've had a while here and I just want to double-check. I think we're fine on these, but I, I don't want to let time has passed and people think about things. So let me just double-check on these few items that we've already have, have conclusion on. The definition of landscape area now includes the term naturally preserved to address and credit natural areas incorporated into the site design. Does anyone have any change of heart on that? I don't see any hands, so that's, we'll stay the same. Interior building separation was changed from 10 feet to six feet between exterior walls. The people that voted for six feet, do you have any change? I see heads shaking, so no changes on that. Required parking, a minimum of a one space per dwelling unit and the rounding provision has been eliminated. Any change from those that weren't voting in that, or the people that voted in that direction? Is there anyone that is changing their mind to do something different? No, okay. The outright prohibition of short-term rentals has been removed from the regulations and the code that we have will prevail. Any changes? Mark and then Megan.
I, I think it's on the bullet list for today that's on the screen right now. And I, I don't have an issue with the rules that are in place for the R zones, but I do, is, are we going to talk about the C zones?
Okay, we will talk about the C zones separately as this list that's up. But this would be just for the R zones, yes, correct. Any changes for that?
Are captured when I want to ask.
Megan, that was what you were going to ask. Okay, Eric, did you have something too?
Yes, I wasn't sure if we'd actually deliberated the fundamental of removing the STR restriction from the code. I, I was, and maybe I'm a minority view, but I was of the view to keep the restriction in the code. I didn't realize we'd passed go on that topic yet.
Okay, well, we can, we can revote on it too. So we could, we can revote on that, that. I'm going to put.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize we voted on that. Maybe I'm just not remembering that one.
Okay, let me, let me just.
Mayor, I don't, I don't think we voted on it, but it was that the, in the R zones, it would pretty much already be prohibited because of the current code, but it's in the C zone. Is where, where, we need to talk about it.
I think, yes, I think that's what I remember too. I remember that the R zone, because of the limited amount of parking that would be required, that it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to do it, correct Dustin?
So I guess my recollection was that we were going to rely on the existing regulations as a licensure regulations. Within the R zone, the key feature that would be the limiting factor would not necessarily be the parking. It's the residency requirement. So anything within the residential zones would be, the dwelling would have to be the owner's primary residence in order for a license to be issued. So in terms of a second home, that, that would not be eligible. The parking, if you had a two, it's one space is required under licensure for every two bedrooms. So technically that, that is not a strict prohibition just based on parking. It's really the residency requirements of the current licensure that would, that would hold and would be the limiting and still are the limiting factor for, for short-term rentals. And that's embedded in your license code, not necessarily in the zoning code.
So that would be, actually what it would be called at that point is a hosted home share. Correct?
If it were the whole, if it were the whole unit, but the residency requires, whether it's a vacation rental or hosted home share, they, they have the same residential requirement.
Right, right.
In the R zones.
Same residential requirement, yes.
The C zone is unique because it doesn't have the residency requirement. And that's why I believe it stands out here as a discussion point.
So let, let, let's just take those separately. Because I can see that there, I can see some faces that are looking like we need to make sure on this and we didn't actually vote on it. And so let's, let's look at it separately, short-term rentals in the R1 and then short-term rentals in the C1. I think that's best and some people will feel comfortable with the regulations we already have. Some people might not. So let's, maybe we should just look at that. Let's just, since we thought we might have that already done last time, let's just take that subject right now. Let's just go with that and then we'll, then we'll go with the C1 after that. So I think Dustin has explained the rule that we have right now in the R1. And so thoughts on that, whether that is enough? Because we would be able, there would be able to be some hosted home shares or short-term rental, I guess you could call it, if a person had parking and if it was their full-time residence up to, up to 90 days a year, which is the regulation now. So thoughts? We're talking R zone only right now. Tim and then Eric.
I think I would be, I would be in favor of leaving it to the existing regulations. You know, I guess, you know, given the residency requirement, requirements, it might actually make some, I'm, I'm open to discussion on this or other thoughts, but it almost seems like it would almost make it more affordable for folks if they could rent it out as a short-term rental, given the existing requirements that it might actually be a source of income for people that they would otherwise not have.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Eric?
Yeah, that's a fair point by Tim, first of all. I guess I had approached it from the perspective of liking the language that was in a couple drafts back to just say that this code is not a pathway to the short-term rentals. Because I was, you know, we all are trying to strive for the best crystal ball and it can be hard here. But I was trying to think of what we're trying to do and it, and my feeling is that we're trying to benefit our local community and have more housing options available to it. And that by, through the specter of the possibility of short-term rentals, we were finding a way perhaps or allowing a path for outside, folks outside our community to sort of monetize this and sort of just lead to this more of the downsides of more density without benefiting the community we're trying to benefit. So I, and I realize what's been said too about these other code provisions working sort of consistent with the concern I'm just raising. But I guess it felt cleaner to me and give me more confidence on the issue if we just didn't allow this code to provide a path to short-term rentals.
Okay, others? Mark?
I was just going to say that though I agree with, you know, Eric's goals, I, I feel that the current regulations are fine for STRs and they would, that it's cleanest to just do it this way, so, the way the current code is.
And Mark, I just want to clarify, being the current code that we already have in the books regarding short-term rentals?
Right, and, and the R zone not being, needing. Right, and, and the R zone, um, not being needing to be in this code as well, right?
Okay, thank you. Megan?
I'll jump in. I don't totally know what I think on this, but I guess I mean, I definitely. And I think this is the point that every counselor has of I don't want these to be, uh, you know, short-term rentals that an investor owns, but I do think our current. Regulations in the residential zones, uh, don't allow that already. Uh, given you have to be a resident and there is a time limit on it. And so I guess I'm going back to my, my version for all of this code if I would like to treat these as close to the rest of our. Our code, uh, that it's very simple to do and it doesn't have a bunch of extra requirements that make these unappealing to do. In which case I'd like to reland our existing short-term rental code in the residential zones.
Okay. Jessica?
Um, I, I was comfortable with, um, just relying on the existing code. I think Eric did make some good arguments. Um, I know we haven't quite got there yet, but I. I would support putting something that says not allowing them in the C1 zone, which if we're going to stay that. In the code, in this code, then it seems like it'd be easy to just say. In any of these middle housing developments. Yeah, so those are my thoughts.
Gladys?
Uh, yeah, I think we should keep the, keep the current code.
Okay, and I'm, um, in favor in the R zone of keeping the existing code. For reasons already mentioned by others. Okay, C1. So currently Dustin, could you just give us? The regulations in the C1 for, for short-term rentals, just kind of in a nutshell and the parking on that too.
Uh, same regulation when it comes to parking, the big difference between your residential and your commercial zones is, uh, in C1, it is. Not limited to, uh, primary residence. So that is, that is the feature that, that really separates the two. Uh, currently all your development in C1 has that same allowance. This would be, this would be no different unless there was a specific prohibition in, placed into this code that would limit it. So really the residency requirement is the biggest differentiating factor.
Listen, I, I can't remember, is there the 90-day limit in commercial zones as well, or is it?
Yeah, I have to go back to that and check that number.
Okay, yes, I can't remember, sorry.
I, I think I remember there was no 90-day limit, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. But maybe, we probably should know that before we start discussing that. I think it'd probably be important to people. Cause I think in a C zone, you can build a hotel. And it's like, well, you can build a hotel there, um, which is short-term rentals. So would these? Which is very dense. So, but you still have to have the parking. I think the limiting factor might be more parking than anything else. Um, in the C zone, because you have to have parking for it. So, let's go on to one of the other ones and maybe Dustin, you could look up that. The timeframe on the short-term rentals in the C zone for us. That'd be great. And I'm okay with just taking the next, the next one on the list. So, um, site area requirements for dwelling units, 800 square feet. In the R1. So that's basically taking that chart that we have, which is on. Page 10 of our packet. And making that first column that says R1, um, look the same. Um, as it says in R2 and R3. With the one dwelling per 2,500 square feet would still stay the same. But then there would be bonuses for smaller houses. Bonus, uh, density. I think I'm stating that correctly. So this is, I think we, before we talk about. How much and all that kind of stuff. Are we in favor of that in general? Let's just go around. With that first. And let's have a little bit of discussion. Megan, you're the one who thought maybe that would be a good idea. So why don't you give us your numbers on that?
I'll jump in. Yeah, so I think, uh, it's probably. Two-fold, but one, one of the biggest things that I'm hoping we get out of this code is that we are building. Uh, more diverse housing types and housing types that better meet the needs of our actual household sizes. In the community and we really are not getting anything in the 600 to 800 square foot realm. Um, at all, you know, and we're not getting that much in the 1,200 and below as well, but. Uh, there's at least something occasionally in that realm. Um, and then I really would like to incentivize. Some of these smaller one-to-two-bedroom household sizes. To, to meet the needs of our actual community. Um, and then within this, I also think. If we're going to talk about all of these zones, yes, there are differences in, in the, you know, the amount of green space and the amount of space between buildings. And I think that's valid given low, medium or high density, but I also. Don't see why we wouldn't be incentivizing the diversity of housing types that we want in every other zone in this R1 zone. Um, because they will be slightly different than the R2 and R3, but they also should provide the housing types that this community needs in every place if we want diverse neighborhoods. So I sit, I, I, in my mind, yeah, adding, adding this bonus that gives you one extra unit. For building the small units, it would actually be the same mass or smaller than the 12 or 1,500 square foot houses that would get built for two units. Shouldn't change how a neighbor feels about it, but should add. Uh, more diverse housing to our community, which is a real positive.
Thanks, Megan. Um, thoughts, anyone else have any? Thoughts on this yet? It's a little bit new, new concept here this evening. Not completely new. We are looking at it in R2 and R3 already, but, uh, Mark?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hip to Megan's suggestion. Uh, just quick, so it'd be the, the current, the. Table for R1 in section A, uh, is 2,400 square feet in 5,000 square feet. So. If, if the number she threw out before, if it was three, 800 square foot. Units in 7,000 square feet, that's, that's even a smaller. Percentage of the property that's, um, covered with houses. So, so, so I think that. Yeah, how, how we say that, so it'd be one per 2,200 or whatever you calculated out. So, I guess that's just saying, I, I don't think it's. More dense than what we have written and it does give a bonus for more smaller homes unless, unless I'm missing something. Um, that, that's a positive, so.
I guess the only thing it will, um, what it would add. That might be conceived as negative. Is you would, you would have one more parking space. If you had three units instead of two, you'd have three parking spaces. So there'd be a little bit more. Area that would be covered for parking. And you'd have, you know, one more car going in and out potentially. Um, but that would be a, the square footage covered on the lot wouldn't be any bigger. Other than having one more car. Potentially. Um, others? Tim and then Jessica?
Thanks, Mayor. It doesn't seem like something that I would be opposed to, but what I really don't have a good feel for though. Is, is, would it actually be sufficient to actually incentivize? Then the house is being built. So it, it doesn't seem like a negative thing. I'm not sure. I'm trying to, and I don't have the knowledge base actually. You know, understand whether that would be, uh, be, the bonus would actually be something that would. Encourage developers to build smaller houses. So I guess that's kind of my wishy-washy way of saying that. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't seem, uh, like a terrible idea, but I'm not. I'm not really have heard much. Suggesting that it would actually be an incentive to do that.
Oh, Jessica, I think you had your hand up and then Gladys.
Um, I, I was kind of leaning towards leaving it like it is, but I appreciated Mark's math. To show that. That potentially you're not ending up with any more square footage on the lot. So, in that case, then I would be okay with it, but what I am concerned about is coupling this with the bullet. Further down, uh, that talks about if an 800 square foot unit would be allowed to have a garage, in which case then. It is more. So I'll say I don't like the idea of a garage on the 800 square foot unit. So, so that's how I, I see these as kind of connected. I'm okay with the bonus if we don't allow it to have a garage.
Okay, Gladys?
I support it as is. We should try it.
You're saying, you're saying yes? Okay. Um, Eric?
Well, I think you have the votes, um, to, to pass this. I was, I was, I was concerned about it. First as a matter of process, where I think we're making substantive changes after we've closed the public hearing. Uh, and I'm a little uncertain as to the empirical sort of basis for this, which is a shade of what Tim was saying. And we already have, um, some significant changes being made to R1. Uh, and, um, so I would, I would be not inclined to make this further change, but, uh. It, it sounds like you have the vote, so it may not matter.
Okay, um.
Ma- Madam Mayor?
Yep.
Uh, can, can I make a comment on, uh, Counselor Haney's concern about making substantive changes? I lost this exact question at Luba, um, not too long ago. Challenging a city of Portland legislative ordinance and Lubo is pretty clear that every time the. Ordnance goes through, uh, deliberation and there's a, uh, an amendment offered by a city councillor. The, there is no requirement to reopen public testimony just because there was a, a, a change to. An ordinance, even a, even a big change, well, that's, was in the case of my appeal. So. For what it's worth. You, you may as a matter of policy want to, but you're not legally obligated to.
Okay, and that's, that's been tested.
Tested and lost, yes.
Okay, okay, alright. Yeah, I mean, we, we have the votes. Um, I am not a hundred percent on for this. I don't know if it's going to give us more 800 square foot units. And I definitely want the garages. So, I'm kind of the opposite of Jessica. If people want to put a garage on an 800 square foot unit, I want them to be able to do that. So I'm kind of, um, on the. Well, yes, but I don't want garages, or I do want to have garages, especially for the smaller units, or I want them to be allowed at least. But I think we've got, um, we've still got four yeses with no. With nothing attached to those yeses. So, um, Megan?
So I, and I might be missing something, but I just have a question, I guess, for Tim, Eric and, and you Kate of if this doesn't work. Then it just doesn't get used. Is there a downside to having it in code and no one uses it?
No, I don't, I, probably not.
This whole thing is an experiment, right? So, uh, we hope, we hope it, it works. Um, we will find out.
Tim, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm taking the heart to Jessica's comments about the garages. I mean. If it really is a three, 800 square foot houses and then 900 square feet of garages. That doesn't seem like a, a positive outcome. To me.
Can, compared to the, what is it, 3,000 square feet of duplex and two garages?
Well, we've got, we've got four yeses. So. Do, do we want to discuss the garages further specific to this, or we can just discuss garages on this other bullet point too? And then we may have just reapply it to this. When we talk about it there. Cause I think it's going to be the same discussion in both spots.
I support a garage.
Okay. Alright, let's go with the four. We've got four yeses on that. Six-unit development cap in the R1 zone. Can be comprised of duplexes and/or detached single dwelling cottages. So Dustin, where, where is that in our packet? Or is this new?
Somewhere. In section A, there is a note in the table that refers to six dwelling units as the, as the cap. And that has been pretty consistent, uh, for the whole time. Um, there is a provision that has been questioned about whether this is just. Allowed for cottages, or can you do two units? So the, the code also requires a maximum of two units per building in the R1. Can these be mixed in or? In order to get here, it's, is it just, uh, it's clearly eliminating or affirming that a six-unit development has to be by way of cottage.
Oh, I see, okay. So let, let me, uh, restate this, so everyone's, we're really clear on it. So what it's saying is. In our packet, page 10, under the R1, it says six cottages, maximum unit per development. But then the next line down, it says maximum units per building two. So we're just confirming. Whether some of the total six units can be duplexes. A duplex is two units. They're just have a, a common wall. So you might have two duplexes. Which would be four units and then two single cottages, correct Dustin?
Yeah, so, or a still duplex and four cottages or three duplexes would be the maximum amount. Uh, we just want to confirm. And make sure it's, it's clear. I think there's a little consistency issue there that we, we were looking to resolve. And I, I heard it from different interpretations from various counselors, so it's important the language is.
Okay, okay. And then triplexes are not allowed in the R1 and fourplexes are not allowed in the R1, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, so we're just, are duplexes allowed as some of those units in the R1? Or they all have to be individual units? Megan?
So I just have a clarifying question for Dustin. If we kept the code as is where. You can only have six units per development, assuming you have enough square footage. If the cottages, does that mean that if you ever did any attached duplex? The max you could ever have in a, in a total development would be two, or how does that? Play out?
I believe the intent is six regardless of the configuration. Whether they're cottages or whether they were duplexes.
So the, having the cottage written into this chart right now, doesn't meet the intent.
No, I think it provides some confusion.
Okay.
So that's why we're trying to clarify what, what, what we want here.
Okay, and my memory of the various versions we've seen is this was written as six cottages back when cottages had a different definition that they were. You know, 900 square feet and below or, or specifically a different size, um, in which case this made some more sense as a. A separate provision. Uh, is that right?
That's correct. When cottages had their own standards and included certain amounts of open space, this is a legacy. Kind of a, a, a piece that is left there. I just don't want to be pulling things out when you all have debated them. Kind of a, a piece that is left there. I just don't want to be pulling things out when you all have debated them. So.
Awesome. No, that, thank you. Since I'm muted, I guess I'll just say that yes, I, now that cottages mean the same thing as everything else, I, I see no reason why we wouldn't just have six units per development. With, and whether they're. Attached duplexes or their cottages. Those, those all mean the same thing at this point, basically, so.
Mark, did you ever hand up?
Yeah, I, I just, so all we're talking about doing is striking that one word cottage in that table. Is that, is that true?
That would be the change, the, the change.
Right, and then, and then it's, we're, it's just flexibility at that point. They can. Put the, put them together or put them six feet apart or put them as many as they want. Okay.
So you're good with that, striking that cottage word? Okay, all right, Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. Dustin, was this discussed in the planning commission at all? The, the distinction between cottages and duplexes? Was there some rationale I'm trying to get at why it was cottages?
It actually was, and slowly the cottage, it started out, the code, draft code that I initially introduced had a much more advanced cottage section. And slowly cottage. Itself really became eroded and it became more of a. A term without any differentiation from the other type of units. And, and this was just, that's why I mentioned that this was kind of a legacy of that, that it didn't get left out. So the planning commission in their recommendations, really, they eliminated the cottage provisions, some of the common open spaces and just really. Kind of use this to simplify or took a more simplified approach.
Thank you.
And I kind of read it that they actually. I, you know, you're kind of calling it simplified. I would call it being more prescriptive because they got more descriptions of the dwellings. The sizes, the heights, everything that we needed to have about it. And so they described them that way instead of just saying cottage. That, that's how I kind of thought, thought it happened. Jessica?
I'm good with striking the word cottage.
Tim, did you, I didn't get. Tim, were you okay with that or?
Yeah, that's fine, Mary. Thank you.
Okay, all right. I didn't want to pass by you without. Getting something. Gladys?
I support removing cottage from the current code.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, I, I kind of like the ethos of cottage, just in terms of communicating about what this code's about, but from a, just a wonky code writing perspective. I agree that you can strike the word.
Okay, and I just want to confirm, Eric, that you're, you're okay with the, the way it's written here. We have maximum units, two per building, so you're okay with the duplexes being able to be. Mixed in there. They don't all have to be separate units.
That's right. I mean, I think at some point tonight we'll have a broader discussion, or I guess I would hope to about this, but. From the question you're presenting me, yes, I agree with, I think you're, we have unanimity on this issue.
Okay, great. And I also agree with everyone else. So we're all in agreement on, on this. To strike the word cottage and I'm fine with duplexes. Right, great, um. Did you find out about the C-zone?
Yeah, Mayor, I can share. I'm hoping able, I could share. I was able to pull up the website on a. Without interrupting the screen share. So on our website, you have the regulations. It does not have the ninety day ceiling in C, in the C-zones, so. It has a required parking. It does not have a primary residence and it does not have a ninety days limit. For your new, your new licenses. And I'm, I might be able to share that without having everything meltdown. This is the city zoning code.
Okay.
With. The primary residence in ninety days not applicable to new short-term rentals.
Okay, so the, the only limiting factor will be the parking, really, in the C-zone.
That's correct. Available parking.
Okay. So let's go back to that now that we know what the code is on the C-zone. And we know what else is allowed there. We can do hotels there. Um.
Sorry, parking was one space per two bedrooms?
And you don't have to live there. And you can do it three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year. Megan?
I'll just start. Um, yeah, so given that part, that parking restriction doesn't feel like a, a real limiting factor, given our one. Space per unit and these are all going to be, you know, small bedroom. Number units, that's the goal. So I think the incentive would be very strong to do short-term rentals in the C1 zone. With this housing type and that is counter to. What I would like these units to be used for. So I'm, I'm fine with prohibiting short-term rentals in the C1.
Okay, others? Mark?
Um, I was going to suggest that the, the STR rules just be the same as in the other zones, but, but. Just saying you can't do it is, is fine by me too, so.
Okay, so I just want to make a couple more things clear. So in the C1, if you can get enough parking, you can do a hotel and you can do short-term rentals. If you have a house or a house and an ADU. That is put up, that isn't using this code, you can do those as short-term rentals. But with this particular code, if you're using this particular code in order to build something. We're asking, can you do short-term rentals? I'm just trying to make sure, I keep clarifying what can and can't be done during the discussion. So everybody's really clear on it. Others? Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. I think Mark's point was, was, original point was a good one. And, you know, if it really is, what we're striving for here is for people. To own homes. In, that are built under this code in the C1 zone. I'm not sure why. Why we wouldn't allow them the opportunity. To supplement their income. Using a short-term rental as per the other, as per, per the residential code. I guess that's kind of, it's more of a question than a statement. I just don't understand why, what the rationale is there. Why we would allow them to do that in the residential zone and not the commercial zone. If the residency requirement were to be applied to that. Situation.
So Tim, your question is, just reiterate this again. Your question is, why don't we apply the residential zone? STR regulations. In the C-zone for short-term rentals? Is that what you're saying? That that might be, that's a suggestion, a possible suggestion?
Right.
Okay, all right. And that's a different question that we've been answering so far, but that's a good. That's a good idea. So we'll, let, let's just continue on with people who haven't spoken yet and then maybe we can revisit what, what that might look like. Others? Eric?
Well, I don't think, I mean, Tim's, Tim's raising a good question and the way Megan actually phrased it, I wasn't sure she was saying what I heard. That we're not going to allow short-term rentals in the C1 zone. You know, that's not the end of the statement, right? What we're saying is we're not going to allow this code to be used to develop. You know, cottages or whatever you like to call them in the C1 zone or not. And I think. I am less concerned about this than I was in the other context because it seems that there's more opportunity, kind of similar to what the mayor's saying. In our commercial zone, I would think it's more of a. Sort of more urban, inherently urban type of a setting that can tolerate this type of a thing. So this. Botheres me less, I suppose, and because when I was raising this issue before on the, on the other topic, but I think. I would, my view would be, I'm not being very articulate, but I'm trying to agree with Megan and Mark. That I would have this middle housing code state that units built pursuant to this code. May not be used for short-term rentals. And I would say period, but I think that's a minority view, so I would say at least as to C1. Because. Otherwise, we're just sort of offering a monetization opportunity for outsiders to just build all these units and we have limited commercial space for commercial purposes. And it just, if the goal here is provide housing for our local folks. Allowing this in the commercial zone to me may not achieve that goal because we're allowing it to be monetized for vacation rental use, which is not the goal. And as per Tim's comment. Because there's not a residency requirement, it's, that's the problem. So it seems like we either fix it on the short-term rental code side. Or we have some measure of mitigation through this code. So I support the adding back the language to not allow this to be a path for short terminals, at least in the commercial zone.
Okay. Jessica and then Gladys?
Yeah, I had already said, but I would support. Not allowing this code to, to be used for short-term rentals in the C1 zone.
Okay, Gladys?
I choose support this code to not allow short-term rentals in the C1 zone.
Okay. And I'm, I also agree not to allow short-term rentals in the C1 as the C1 is written right now for short-term rentals. So. Tim posed an interesting question though, and I'm not sure how hard this would be to administer and maybe. Rachel or Dustin could chime in on this. Will, Will does a lot of that, but he's not with us today. I don't believe Will's on the call this evening. How, what would the logistics be? If we, and I don't know if anyone wants to do this, but is it even feasible or possible or the logistics too difficult? To say you can build these in the C1 zone, but, and they could be short-term rentals, but they have to be used. As described in the R-zone. So you have to live there. So it can't be people building a bunch of these that don't, don't live in them. Is that very, is that difficult to administer? Because it may be very difficult.
There, I, it has to be a special provision. We would have to do something special in the administering of the STRs in order to somehow flag these as unique. Since there's no land use decision associated with them, as there, there would have to be a way to go through and figure out how to. How to somehow flag any unit built in the C1 as separate and unique from other C1 properties. Possible, it adds a logistical and licensing. Twist to it.
Tim?
Dustin, isn't that true though with? You know, if you're going to prohibit it, if you're going to prohibit something that's already occurred. Allowed, you're going to have to flag them anyways. Right?
If, if, if they were all prohibited, yes, the same, same administration would, would occur.
If you prohibit. The. Housing units developed under this code. In the C1 zone and you're going to prohibit that being for a short-term rental, you're going to have to separate those out from the other. Developments in the C1 zone that are allowed to be. Short-term rentals. Right?
That's correct. Yeah, if they're, if they're separated by licensure, by a unique class, we will have to flag them somehow.
Right, so it wouldn't be. I guess I'm just going to make my case, there wouldn't be any, any, I guess. I guess it could be more onerous, but I'm not exactly sure how. To flag them for some other type of regulation, because you're already flagging them for a different type of regulation.
It's the ongoing, it, it is the ongoing and right, monitoring that will be the most difficult. And just speaking off the cuff here, an outright prohibition is always easier than. Than. Kind of something, something that's unique. So, you know, at, at this point, I would say. Where I, where I hear council going is an outright prohibition and that will be easier. Certainly, we could come back, you know, if, if, if this. Is something that, you know, is a barrier to, to individuals. Developing housing in the C1 zone, then I think that's something we could come back and discuss. You know, there's also a broader. Question there of, of how much housing and what type of housing actually should be developed in the C1 zone, so. It kind of raises more questions than, than I think we can really answer tonight.
Right, and those, and those are fair points, Rachel. Thank you so much for making that. That, that's very helpful, but I do, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to see here in both my comments with respect to the short-term rentals. Is, you know, is that there, there is a potential financial benefit. To the people that are occupying those and are able to rent them out as short-term rentals and it may actually. Allow certain individuals to actually. Own and inhabit that housing that would otherwise not be possible if they didn't have that income. So that's, that's really the point I'm trying to make. And, but I'm not going to. You know. Belabor, belabor the majority here.
And there may be something that can be added to the license to, I, I think we just would need some time to figure that out. I, I understand the intent. There may be something we could add to the license that would enable us to get there. Yeah, I'm just not sure we can answer that, that tonight, if that's the direction that council wants to go.
That's fine, thank you.
Does anyone else have any other comments on that one then, or not? Okay. Let's go on to. Parking between dwellings and street frontages. And I'm trying to remember we've got. Did you have additional pictures on any of that? Dustin or not? I know, I thought you did last time, but.
I have lots. Is there, is there that you want? I could, I could. Somewhere between the last fourteen meetings, I think I have some exhibits.
Okay, and I don't, I don't know that we, you know, they might be helpful, but let's just get. Initial indication, because we haven't talked about this one at all. So this is the parking in front of the building. Not to the side, not in front of a garage, correct, but in front of a building between the building. And the street or the building and the sidewalk. So that's what we're discussing here. Versus being behind the building or on the side of the building. So. Anyone want to start on this? So basically, you're, you're either. In favor of it or you're not in favor of it. And you might have some suggestions of, you know, some different ideas. Gladys?
Yes, I am in favor. I'm in favor.
Okay, so you're in front, you're okay with people parking in front of their buildings? Okay. All right. To some extent, at least. Megan?
Yeah, in, in the last month of us talking about this, I've definitely been looking at all of our existing neighborhoods when I'm driving around and almost all of the houses found between one and four cars between the, you know, the frontage. And almost all of the houses found between one and four cars between the, you know, the frontage and the the house. Um, and so again, and I want these to be built, I don't want to add a bunch of restrictions to these that aren't part of our other codes. Um, I see no reason why we wouldn't allow some level of of parking in between. The street and the house, much like pretty much every other house in town has.
Others, uh Jessica?
Um, I kind of like Megan, my thoughts have also changed through all these meetings and and thinking about what's allowed. Elsewhere, um, I would like to limit it, though. And I don't know if it's one or two uh spots in between the house um and the street frontage. I still I definitely like, you know, one. Access like one curb cut. But whether that's one or two parking spots in between the house is I guess I'm on the fence between that, but I wouldn't want more than that.
Okay, so so you're okay with the parking, but a limited amount. Okay. See who's some Mark.
So so with the one curb cut, you you can't have more than two parkings in front of between the street and the house, right? So you come into the and you turn left to go into one place between the street and house. And you'd go right to turn into another place of this street and house, and you'd go straight to get to the third unit if there's a third unit. Right, so I I think that there was and and certainly this is true for me is there was confusion about whether parking. To the side of the house, just ten feet back from the curb was allowed. And and once it was clear that they could do a parking lot on this, you know, to the side of a house. My concerns about parking in between the house and the street pretty much went away. So I I think the code is. Better with without sticking a car sort of sideways in front of a house, but um. But I guess. And I don't really know why one would choose to do that. But I guess it's a the point is that it's a flexibility thing, so. My to to summarize, um, I would rather it not not be, but I won't vote against it if it if it is.
Eric or Tim? Tim?
Yeah, I agree with uh what what people are saying here, really. If the intent is to um. Build more of these types of housing. Providing putting up restrictions, that's going to make it more difficult to do that, doesn't make a lot of sense. So that that's I'm fine with it.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, it feels like what we're trying to balance is the um desire to accommodate more off street parking, which I think is a good thing. With maybe sort of a community feel aesthetics concern and maybe a sort of more impervious services now concern. And so it's sort of one of these, I think, um, I would balance those two things to try to get as much parking off the street as we can. So I, for that reason, I guess I'll join with with the others. I like Jessica's comment about possibility of limiting it in some fashion, but generally speaking, um, having more. Flexibility, I think the word that was used seems like a positive, so I think I'm I'm with the group here.
Okay. Um, I'm also okay with parking in front of the house to some degree. So we have a majority of people that are okay with parking in front of the building to at least to some degree. So you know, we I think we have. I think we've got four that are straight yeses. And if we were we were going to put any kind of limitation on it. You know, we might say that we we don't want a hundred percent of the house, maybe fifty percent of the house. Or one car. Um, in front of each house versus, you know, the whole frontage um with a car. So does anyone want to discuss that or can we just leave it? Do we want to just leave it a yes?
I just needed clarification when you're saying the whole frontages car, you know, you still have the fourteen foot curb cut, but you're thinking that then the entire front yard is paved or?
Yes, the fourteen 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 foot for the driveway, so that's all paved there. And then you make a turn in to in front of the house, and then that would be if it was a fifty foot wide, um, you've got. Um, let's see, twenty. Thirty six feet, thirty six feet, five feet on the side yard, so that that won't be paved. So that would be thirty one feet and a parking space is eighteen. So it's. More than half.
Okay, so you're saying you're saying like percentage of paved area.
Yeah, percentage of paved area in front of the dwelling.
Got you.
That that's all I was, you know, trying in my mind, if we had a fifty foot wide lot, fourteen foot curb cut, yeah.
I get confused on this one.
Yeah, versus versus putting two cars end to end all the way in front of the house. That was what I was trying to get away from.
Right, okay.
But I don't need to get into those um. Into that minutia myself.
Well, how does it prevent a parking lot at the street? And then the buildings behind it? It doesn't, I guess.
It doesn't.
We haven't changed, you can't have any parking in the ten foot. Front setback, right?
Dustin?
Uh, we'd have to make some clarifications on what could be permitted. Right now, there's nothing permitted in ten foot front yard or between the buildings. Um, if you're going to change and allow it, I I could work up some alternative and language for you to consider, but right now there. That wouldn't be that wouldn't be something I it would need some additional language for the requirements if you're going to allow it and to what extent? And I could I could prepare some graphs for you. If if that's a majority direction where a majority of council wants to go is to allow it to some extent, I could craft something. Because there could be. So many permutations of the what of what of how this could be drafted. I could give you some options and some numbers uh if you wanted to allow that to happen.
Okay, well, I maybe have a clarifying question for the rest of council, because is I mean allowing between the frontage and the house. I guess was in my mind different than allowing in the ten foot setback. But I don't know if that's where everyone else's brain was.
My mine wasn't there, I I was. I was thinking you could park it in the ten foot setback. Because that's what I see around town already. So I was thinking that that was, you know, I just didn't want the whole length of the whole front of the house to be car. But I was okay with it being up front. Less permeable surface, for one thing, for me. Mark, we can't hear you. You're muted.
If if it's an eight hundred square foot house, you know, twenty four feet on a side, that's one car is almost the whole way across the house, right?
Fifty percent of the house.
An eighteen foot wide house, is that what you're saying?
I said if it's an eight hundred square foot house and it's square. The eighteen foot parking spot is most of the way across the building. So if if you said half or a third, then I I don't know. My biases are showing a little bit, and that's for sure, but um.
I thought the point was to add less restrictions. I mean, it sounds like what we're doing now is we're saying yes to it, but here's another restriction to it. Right?
Yeah. Um, Dustin, I have a question about if we just say yes. How will it look? How will the language look?
If you just said yes, I I will I I will need to put something in there. Even if it's using what the default code says, so your underlying base zone for your code will allow one parking space. But it's one parking space per dwelling, so I'm gonna have to figure out how to reconcile the one space per dwelling. Uh as compared to one curb cut and access. So right now you have one access point. That's part of the the standard code. If you have one access point with multiple dwellings accessing off it, I'm gonna have to figure out how to. How to merge our existing code that allows one parking space to be in front of the dwelling uh and a single access point. So I I will have to manufacture something.
It's only um it only affects the front dwelling anyway, because if there's other dwellings in the back. It this doesn't affect those, it's just this front dwelling that faces the street, that's all we're talking about, all the rest of them don't matter.
Well, you could put the parking for the other ones in front, like the park, the parking doesn't need to be right next to the dwelling unit. That is gonna be used by.
But I would assume that that front space would be for the front dwelling.
It could, but like Megan's saying, you could have two or three parking spots at the very front.
And that's why I was talking about a limitation. So you could have at least you could have at least one there. And then because you're gonna have to have a driveway that goes into the back for the other units. Well, I guess you wouldn't have to if you put all the parking in the front.
Yeah, I don't want it, I don't want that look of like the parking lot in the front. I'm seeing like the one curb cut, but then like angled in parking for everybody, I don't. I don't want that.
I was visualizing it was going to be for the front unit only, one unit, one car up there.
We also have to remember that the builder is going to be trying to design the unit as best as possible. So again, by us restricting where we would like parking is restricting this code even more. So let's not do that.
Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, it seems like these are kind of like aesthetic considerations, right? And not necessarily, uh, and and in some cases, if we put more restrictions on it. I think what what will end up happening is that there will be some sites that will not um be built because of it. Some sites sites with like steep slopes and like, um, so. You know, I I don't think anybody wants to see a front yard where there's a parking lot. But the more complicated we make this. It seems be less of these will get built. But that's just kind of the way that I feel. So I guess I guess we have a decision whether aesthetics are more important than getting them built.
Right, I'm gonna go around again. For people, we've had quite a bit of discussion on it, unless someone's burning to with something else. And let's just go yes or no for parking in the front and what, you know. Not limitations or anything like that, you're either are or you aren't. And let's see if we have enough yeses without any conditions, one way or the other on this, I don't know if we will. Megan?
Um, yeah, I mean, I I generally agree with Gladys and Tim of again, yeah, I want these to be built with with minimal restrictions. So in the binary, I definitely am fine with parking in front. I do see the value of like not having eight to twelve. So maybe that's my level of limitation is very high, uh way higher than the one to two. But I'm I'm generally gonna allow the developer to be flexible with it and. Um, be supportive of that.
Okay, um, Tim, I think you've already you're you're a yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And Gladys, I believe you said a yes.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um. That's anyone else? Jessica?
I'm a no without the conditions.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, I'm the same as Jessica.
Mark?
I'm a no.
Um, I'm yes. Straight yes. Right, we've got four yeses. So we would rely on the code that we currently have, um, is that right, Dustin?
Yeah, I'll bring you back regulations in place of that for for guidance, uh so you'll be able to see the language.
Okay. Um, secondary access for sites which are required to use an alley. So this was a discussion we had about, um. There was a couple places in the in the code that we have in front of us. That stated that we if you had an alley, you had to use the alley. And then we discussed it and said, well, what if it's already got a curb cut and already has a house on it? Can you use that or not? So that's what this discussion is about. And I think we kind of thought maybe we shouldn't make people. Take away that curb cut they already have and and load the whole thing from the alley. But um I don't think we finished that discussion when we talked about it. Megan?
Uh, I guess I just want to clarify, I thought this wasn't just for existing access points. But if you had a new lot that has an alley, but you could also. You know, so I know there's a property up on in the heights where they have, uh, what, four four units? And so two are access from the alley and two are access from the main street. So you don't have to punch, you know, the road all the way through and you have more green space. Um, type of thing. That so it's not just for conversions, I guess, was my interpretation of this, and maybe that's for clarity.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, I believe it is not just for conversions, it would be for any um. Any any lots, not just conversions.
Okay, um, yeah, then uh from my end, you know, I I do limiting curb cuts to the fourteen feet. Per frontage, I think is great to maintain as much on street parking as possible, but I also. I am fine with giving these properties that same curb cut as everyone else, uh in addition to alley access for flexibility.
Okay, thanks, Megan. Others? Uh, Jessica?
I would support um not requiring that they only access from the alley if they have an alley.
Okay, the same as Megan, all right, Mark?
I agree with Jessica and Megan, flexibility.
Gladys?
I too echo my peer sentiments.
All right. Eric?
Same for me, thank you.
And Tim?
Sounds good.
All right, and I also agree. So that would and there'd be a couple of places that that would be changed, I believe, um so they can have alley access. But they can also have access off the street. Existing or new, um, new, either way. Right, um. Smaller dwellings, eight hundred square feet or less, would be allowed the additional three hundred feet to accommodate a garage. Similar to what we already have in the code. Similar to what we already have in the code for the larger units. Mark?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I did a quick calculation and um having. Three, two units of, um so adding up to 3,000 square feet on a 5,000 lot foot. Lot is 60% lot coverage and having three 800 square foot homes, even if they have. A ridiculously big garage. Adds up to 47% of lot coverage. So so it's still, just like the other example, it's. Still less lot coverage to allow the three units. So just, just. That was, that sort of came up, and I just wanted to share that.
Mark, could you, could you go through that one more time? So it in in conclusion, can you? You're saying that if you add the garages, it's not. A big burden because you have to have the parking space for it anyway? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's because it it. If we go to the 2330 per square feet of lot per 800 square foot unit, which gives you the bonus of. A third unit on a 7,000 square foot lot. Just. The lot is a little bit bigger than the 5,000 square foot that's in the table now. So even with the garage, the lot coverage is less with the three units. Then on the 5,000 square foot lot with. Two units per the existing code. Does that make sense?
With the garages.
With the garages, right.
Right, I guess, I mean, assuming this is R1 and the standard lot size is 7,000. You know, let's, if you did two units with garages or three with garages, you would be adding. 300 square feet of coverage with the. The small units with garages. Max. Can compared to what you would get with two, but.
Right, but if you're comparing, the current code talks about a 5,000 square foot R1 lot, allowing two, so I I. Did that math based on that.
Yeah.
So, so I I guess the kind of way that I look at it is. If you have a parking space, there's gonna be one parking space per dwelling. And that dwelling is going to have. You normally would have about a 300 square foot. If you're gonna put in a garage, you'd have, it'd be about 300 square feet. Because you need space, you know, for a door. Opening, you need um space to open your car doors. And with a parking space, you don't have as much space usually. So a parking space takes up about 162 square feet. A garage would usually take up about 300. So we're talking about 138 square feet. Additional. Space that would be impervious. If you allow a 300 square foot garage. It's more.
It didn't sense just a two-story structure with the garage underneath is to me. I mean, that's how I would think that it would be implemented. As opposed to just. More, you know, an 1100 square foot. Footprint. But it's up to, up to the developer, yeah.
Jessica?
I guess one of the things I was thinking about was, you know, we want folks to build the little ones, the 800 square foot. Because they are, will be lower priced. And if it is. Now 1100 square foot, then they're. Gonna be higher price. And so that's where. I mean, I know not everybody's gonna put a garage on just because you can, but that's where I I like the idea of, of. And really trying to get some of the 800 square foot. Yeah.
Others? Tim?
I guess I'm fine with allowing the additional 300 feet. To accommodate a garage, um but I do agree with Jessica's point. That, you know, a $300, or 300 square foot garage is gonna cost money. And so those, those properties are gonna cost more. Than than otherwise. But you know, it's. It's gonna be the, the way that I feel about a lot of this stuff is that it's gonna be built. To accommodate uh the market. So if. If it makes sense. To the developers and the builders to to add a 300 square foot garage to the property, they're gonna do so. I suppose you could prohibit it, but. Again, prohibiting things is, you know. I'm not sure whether that's uh, that's the best thing or not. How's that for being wishy-washy?
Gladys?
Uh, I support the additional 300 feet to be allowed. I think this gives folks the option. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to. Build the additional 300 square feet. Um so this, again, just gives them flexibility to make that choice.
Alright.
This is a close one for me. I'm. A little concerned about the. Sort of the, the, the result of both this and the one earlier where we're going to. Add a potential bonus lot in R1. And it's sort of general result of all that meeting. A pretty significant change to the R1. Situation, so. I guess since the other one already passed, I'm. I'll be a no on this one, but it, I don't think it matters for your vote.
Um. Megan, did you?
I haven't said anything, because I'm.
Okay.
I'm not really sure. I could go either way on this one. I think folks have made uh good points on both sides. Uh you know, I I I reiterate this a lot, but I do, I really would like to see a bunch of one to two bedroom units built. Because I think that's a real need in town that we are not meeting and. And so I guess in the realm of of developer flexibility to figure out what would work to get those built, I'm, I'm gonna err on the side of allowing this. So.
Okay. Um, Mark, you gave us some numbers at the beginning, but I don't know. Where do you stand on it?
Yeah, I. I think that for flexibility, I'm supportive of this. Um, my hope is. You know, a little surf. Surface lot adjacent to the buildings and then small footprint houses like what Jessica imagines. But um I I think that. We're we're trying to say. You know, go, go find out what the market will bear, sort of what Tim said. Um and so I'm. I I don't. I don't. This doesn't break stuff. Um so so I'm supportive of both the. 2330. Per 800 square foot and the. Given that it might have a garage if they build it that way.
Greater diversity of housing is what we're all aiming for.
Yeah, I'm. I'm for the garages. I guess. We have two accessory dwelling units. And neither one have garages. And. The one is perfectly happy with no garage, a little tiny shed to put, you know, some garden tools. It was great. But the other person. Needed more space, and so they actually had to end up renting. Um a space for another $650 a month. To put some of their things. And if they'd had a garage. They could have made it work. To not have to do that. But we didn't have space for a garage. I mean, there was not enough space on the, on the lot to do that. Um and it would have added cost, too. But I can kind of see, oh, my gosh, you know, if we'd had a garage, even if it was a one-car garage. What they had in mind to do probably would have worked uh with with their equipment they had to uh have that garage for the space. So. I just think the flexibility is good to to have. Alright, Dustin, do you have those? For some reason, the screen. Went away. Unless it's just me. Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you.
I believe I I I broke the screen share, so I think.
Oh, okay, okay. I just, I'm like, I can't remember all these things off the top of my head. So we've got um yes on those. Conversion and sites that add dwellings will be allowed to maintain pre-existing driveways and access. And I believe we kind of covered that in uh being able to have access. Both from an alley and from a street. But do you think that that covers it, Dustin? Or do you think we should just go through this separately?
Uh I think this is uh just in regards to conversion. If you're, if you're okay with it being for new dwellings, I think the idea is that. This is specific to. Existing dwellings that remain in place and that some of these access points may not be compliant. Uh but allowing them to stay. So.
Okay.
It relates to conversions and what is already existing.
Okay. So we probably should go through this. So this is only for for converted. Lots that are converting uh places that already have a pre-existing driveway. Will those driveways? Be allowed to remain? And not be told to to tear out. Megan?
Yeah, I mean, I guess on my end, both with the, you know, parking can be in front and, you know, driveways can go from a few different places. And then again. I mean, it seems stupid to to remove. Existing parking to meet a current requirement. Um and and is very counter to, certainly one of my other goals of this is that we are. Preserving some of these large old houses in a way that still provides more housing units. With with these internal conversions that. I would like them to, you know, I I can see maybe you don't make it worse, but like whatever your existing thing is, should stay. It's, it would be weird to. Pull stuff out and then have to build something somewhere else. To meet current code.
Okay. Jessica?
I'm fine um leaving the pre-existing driveways and access.
Okay. Gladys?
I too, I'm okay leaving the pre-existing driveways and access.
Tim?
Makes sense to me.
Mark?
I, there is gonna be a dummy and say, this is allowing to second curb cut, right? This is what we're. Basically saying by leaving the existing house and then a separate driveway going to the back. Is that basically what we're talking about doing?
No, I don't think so. Is that right, Dustin? What he just said?
This would just, just allow, if you had a non-conforming frontage, you could, or a non-conforming access, it would be allowed to stay. It wouldn't permit a second point. An additional access. You would still be bound to the one access point per development.
Okay, I'm not on it then, right?
Um Eric?
I agree.
And I also agree. Alright. So let's see, okay, an amendment relating to periodic reporting of middle housing. So this is. This is something that Eric brought up last meeting or the meeting before. Sometime ago. And I believe Tim had some ideas on maybe simplifying it. And then. Rachel or Dustin? Maybe you could um fill us in on whether this is, I I think there was some. Information about whether we've ever done this type of thing before. And so maybe you could fill us in on that a little bit. In this um meeting. And then we can discuss that. Mayor. Because we've never done this before, as as far as I know. We've never had an amendment like this in a code, correct?
Uh, mayor, it's not something that would typically be codified. There is certainly no. Uh council already has the authority to request information about. Policy decisions. Um and certainly that's something that that. Would be encouraged. So if at some point, even after this building season, uh the city council wanted a report on how many building. Building permits had been issued for them, middle housing code, that is something that staff could could easily provide uh to the city council.
Okay.
Happy to provide additional information if that's helpful, but. I think that's the question that you're asking.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I wanted. Yes, thank you so much on that. So um. Thoughts on? On? I mean, I think I want some kind of reporting. I don't necessarily feel that it's necessary to put it in a code. That, you know, it's just, it's reporting on how how are we doing? What are we doing? You know, it's kind of like we have our. Fees every year, we look at those. You know, but it isn't part of the fee schedule. So I, you know, I'd like to have a report on this, but I don't. I don't think this is where we should put it myself. Is inside the code. So others?
I agree with that. I'm I'm curious. Um. Counselor Haney, help me understand the the purpose of you. Feeling the need that this needs to be a part of the ordinance as. Uh staff has just directed us that typically an amendment like this is not a part of an ordinance. So help me understand, because it seems like, again, we're trying to add more restrictions to something, and I'm trying to understand.
Eric? Do you want to, I mean, you're the one who suggested in the first place, so maybe you can give us your thoughts on it.
Sure, no, I'm happy to do that. Um and by way of a little context, this. Thought I was having originally was sort of born from. Some concerns that have been raised in the community that. This may not achieve the uh the goal of actually providing more housing to our locals. Because of kind of the economic reality that this is just such a wonderful place to be. We have folks from around the country and around the world clamoring to to buy. Buy a home here and that what this could result in. And again, as I said earlier in the meeting, we all are. Trying to do our best with whatever crystal balls we want to have or think we might have. But what could happen is that we. We we sort of exchange um what we have here, part of the specialists of our community and sort of the, maybe some of the elbow room that. Those that purchase in R1 sort of thought they might be getting when they did that with um folks from around the country buying second homes. There was some testimony at the planning commission uh level about. Folks, you know, in other communities like Bend where I think Commissioner Rainey talked about some other. Housing there that had very high price tag. So, you know, and as as some, it's been said along the way in these discussions. Increasing inventory or increasing supply does not uh necessarily decrease demand or lower price. So. We don't know what's gonna happen. And I think the thought was, since we, you know, we did receive um a lot of public input. At the last meeting. And there were many members of the community that had raised concerns. And so the thought was, well. Maybe this will work, maybe it won't, but. If um if this group of legislators here is concerned that it might not work, or maybe it will, we want to celebrate that it will. If we have a structure built into um this law that suggests. Not that we're placing any restrictions on anything. It's just an informational report whereby the planning director would consult with the heads of the different departments. You know, uh. Public safety, fire, uh if, you know, uh public works, because this, you know, there is a chance, and we have comments from this in the public record that. That this could strain our uh infrastructure system, that we receive an objective report. Once a year, it could be more than once. It could be less frequent than that, by the way. But uh just receive a periodic report. Informing council as to um whether or not this code is meeting its objective, so that there is a path. so that there is a path to then stay the course or change course. But because this is so, the thing about this ordinance is it really does go to potentially goes to the bones of our of our of our community, at least in terms of how we're living around one another, degrees of elbow room and things like that. People that have homes, I know we're trying to expand the group that have these homes, but people that have them but with certain expectations. Anyway, I think the community as a whole would like to make sure that we're, our code is comporting with our goals because this this ordinance does lay out some goals in one of its sections. So all this is saying is, let's have, let's have a periodic report about how things are going. And it actually is stated in one of the statewide goals, I think a statewide goal two says, quote, areas experiencing rapid growth and development should provide for a frequent review so needed revisions can be made to keep the plan up to date. So this idea of a periodic review is is one that is in the statewide planning goals. It is, although it sounds like it's rare in in our particular jurisdiction, it doesn't seem like it is something that is unreasonable just to have a report. So where this originally started was was sort of seeing these concerns of that, well, what what mitigation concept should we, you know, if any, build into this? And when I had originally just had it thought of was actually just giving this whole provision a shelf life. Let's say, let's give this a five-year shelf life. Let's have the code expire in five years. And so your five council could then decide whether to extend it or not and have a process for doing that. And then speaking with some of the counselors didn't like that, and so I didn't think that was going to fly. So I sort of transitioned to this idea, which is just an informational report. So the idea again is just to receive a report from from staff once a year, how are we doing to give council an opportunity to adjust? And, you know, why have it in the code? I guess it doesn't have to be in this particular code section, right? I mean, it could put this in another part of the code that says we should have administrative or some sort of administrative reporting on on metrics to test whether we're being successful in our objectives. Maybe not even limited to this particular code section. But I think that the reason I was proposing it is because this is the, this is sort of the one shot, the least I have to have any possibility of commenting on what we're doing. And it just seemed like a reasonable way to mitigate against potential unintended consequences to have an annual review process that somewhat formalizes in the code. Because what if it's in the code, what that says is that as a legislative body, we're aware that this could lead to unintended consequences. So let's have a process to capture and correct rather than leaving it to the whims of the wind. Because we don't, I mean, we're all just, we're all busy staff. Next year, the year after that may not be focused on this. And at least just gives a runway to address the question that is at least on my mind, which is can, is it possible to have unintended consequences here? And if so, should we have a process to at least consider the possibility of making adjustments?
Okay, thanks. Thanks for explanation, Eric, of what your thoughts were about it and why you suggested it. Gladys, and then I think, oh, I thought Megan had her hand up. Jessica, after Gladys.
I I want to understand where Counselor Haney, you're stating the the possible unintended consequences specifically to the infrastructure. When our Director of Planning has said that the infrastructure, the city current has would allow for more density housing. So I'm trying really hard to understand where your assumption or your presumption that there could be an unintended consequence after we've been reassured by city staff that the the infrastructure could allow higher density. So help me understand what help me understand where you're presuming current issues when we've been told the opposite.
Well, I'm not sure exactly what Councilor Rivera is referring to. I do recall in one of the prior hearings, I did ask planning director about whether there'd been an evaluation with respect to infrastructure capacity. And I understand that there hasn't. And I believe the view is expressed that we had a pretty bad infrastructure that if it fails, it won't be on account of this or something along those lines. I'm probably slightly getting that wrong. But there hasn't been, to my knowledge, an assessment of what infrastructure implications this could have. And of course, it depends on the degree. If we have builders like Mike Kits that, you know, do a few of these, it's going to be wonderful. If we have D.R. Horton come in and start levying homes and putting in, you know, 6X across the town, maybe there are issues. And the point is not to prejudge it. The point is simply to provide a process so that the experts, Public Works, has a platform to inform council about whether there is a problem or not, because I don't have the crystal ball.
And I think that, you know, when you're talking about infrastructure discussion, we have to assess all of that one thing against the other because, you know, even in the stormwater sewer and water rate information we had recently, it's like the houses aren't a problem. It's it's industry that needs to pre-treat, you know. So, you know, there's, it's a whole another can of worms to unravel specifically on each particular thing. So I don't think we're going to get into that whole discussion this evening. We've had a lot of discussion on that in the last few meetings. And it can go all all different directions. But I think just the point you're making, Eric, probably is just you'd like to look at it again in a short, fairly short period of time to see what it's done. But in general. Jessica?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was going to say that I feel like this is what council does on many issues. We we never have a crystal ball. We're relying on our qualified staff to tell us, to do the research, present us with the information, the options, and we pick something. And and then we also are relying on our staff to I I feel like we do a really good job of stating what our intent is. And so we rely on our staff to to identify if the outcomes that they're seeing happen are not meeting the intents of what council, what our goals were. So I think this is what we do all the time is we say, you know, staff, go for it. This is what we want to do. These are the goals that we have. This is our, you know, best guess how to get there. And then the staff can come back and say, you know, well, we think if we tweak it, it would actually meet the goals better. So I I like the idea of, you know, having staff tells how it's going. I I mean, I definitely want to have that happen and I appreciate Rachel's suggestion, maybe something even at the end of this building season. I just don't know that I would put it in the code. So I I like the idea of us continuing to ask staff for feedback on how it's going. But not in the code.
Okay, Gladys, and then Tim?
Yeah, I I just wanted to understand where you were coming from, Counselor Haney. Thank you for clarifying. I agree, we should have some sort of update. I do not believe it needs to be an amendment within the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. I I really, I I agree that we definitely need I think it would be good to actually include some language suggesting that we would have a check-in on this. Obviously, there's been a lot of public comment on both sides of this. So I think, yeah, kind of a stripped down version of this or some language could be included somewhere. I think Mark had suggested that maybe in the resolution adopting the ordinance might be a place to put it as opposed to putting in the in the code proper. I don't know whether that's something we could do. If that makes sense at all. Rachel, do you have a comment on that?
Not a specific comment, Counselor, but I do believe that was discussed and that would certainly be something that we can do.
So, you know, I think, you know, what it would do, you know, and I agree with with that staff routinely provides us with updates on all these types of things. So, you know, while it may not necessarily be entirely necessary, I think what it does is it shows good faith to the public that we're cognizant of what their concerns were and that we hear them and that we're going to loop back and we're going to check to make sure that things are going as planned to, you know, allay their concerns. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Tim. Megan? And then Mark?
Yeah, I, from my end, I definitely don't want to see this in code. You know, I think, you know, separate work plan thing and we're trying to clean up our code and make it less awful might not be the right word. And we're, you know, if we want to we want to be efficient, we want to make efficient use of our staff time. I definitely don't want to see something in code that requires an in perpetuity report that future counselors may not want or need. I do see some value in checking in on this code and, you know, six months or a year. I think for the complete opposite reason of Eric, I still have concerns that we've put too many restrictions on this and nothing will get built. In which case I would certainly want to, you know, relook at this and see what we need to change to to get the housing types we need. I don't think that needs, again, yeah, I guess it doesn't need to be codified. It doesn't need to be forever. This, I think, would be beyond the missing middle housing stuff. But actually, I'm going to, since we're talking about this, given the importance of housing for the community and city council in general, I think there may be a larger question beyond this of is there, is all of our other code that currently exists right now meeting the goals that we have? Because it shouldn't just be this. If we're looking at the types of housing that are getting built or the cost or the size, I think we should be looking at everything.
Mark?
Yeah, I agree with some of the stuff that's said. I think, Eric, that it's a, it's a, having a report on housing is is something that's absolutely important. And I think that housing being a key priority for, since I've been on council, you know, speaks speaks to that, getting attention. I don't think it goes in code. Maybe maybe the resolution for approving this piece of code mentions, you know, the council's intent is to ask for a housing analysis on an annual basis or at least an annual basis. I like some of the things, you know, just how are STIs doing? How is ADU doing? You know, all the all the associated pieces of housing solutions that we're wrestling with greatly are part of that same picture, you know, where do we need to adjust? So so I like the idea. I don't think it goes in the code.
I agree with you, Mark, and with others that I don't think it goes in code, but I absolutely think making a suggestion to check in. But I I do think that it would be more of a, you know, how are the ADUs going? You know, all of the housing kind of things that we've been talking about to try and and help our housing situation, we should just look at it all together. But I think that the suggestions that you have regarding looking at the middle housing code, Eric, are great suggestions and that we should, we should definitely look at those. I I would hope that we could look at it in six months and see something. It might be too soon to, you know, that's a pretty, pretty quick. You know, six months from the time this actually goes in effect because it won't, you know, nobody can even look at it and make applications until then. But I, that's, that's pretty quick for people to get a plan together and break ground and, you know, do all the things they have to do. So even if we don't see anything in six months, if there's things in the works, that'd be great, but it might be a little bit too soon to actually look and expect something to be going in six months. But but I but I definitely think we should check on it, but not in code either. So we've got, the majority of the people think that we, it'd be great to look at this, but not to put it in the code. So if we do, could do a resolution, we are actually, I think that is our list. So, Mark?
Yeah, I just had one other thing with respect to building heights. I just wanted to point out that we talked about it last time, but the diagram for the pitched roof option is doesn't match the the words in the code. And so I just want to make sure everyone understands that it is a 28-foot peak that we're talking about and the E would go up whatever amount from what's in the drawing.
Are you talking about page 15 in our packet?
Hold on. It would be packet. Well, the drawing is on, the text is on 15 and the drawing is on page 16. It would be J1A says 28.
Oh, I see it. Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're on agreement that it's 28 and whatever the E adjusts to as opposed to what the drawing says.
Thanks for catching that, Mark. Yeah, the language is correct on the page. That's what I understood that we were going with was 28 feet. On page 15, it actually says 28, but it didn't on the other. Thanks.
That should also change the shed roof height to match text as well, right?
On what page, Megan?
Same page, just the the second drawing. Our text says 25 feet, but the drawing says 23 for building height.
Okay, good. The one for the flat roof does say 21 and they, and the picture says 21. Okay. Does anyone have anything else that, after looking through the code and talking about what we have just talked about, any other burning issues that we? Megan, I've got one too that I want to bring up, but.
Okay, I have three, I guess, text clarifications or questions for Dustin, maybe. Page six of the tonight's packet, the cottage configuration definition explicitly says floor area of 1,200 square feet or less, but the two-unit, three-unit and four-unit ones don't have the size because that's defined somewhere else as 1,200 square feet or 1,500 with the garage. And I guess I just wanted to see if we should be matching that for cottage or if cottage should be having a different explicit size defined here.
It's just redundant.
But cottage cottage could be up to 1,500 with the garage?
Yes.
Okay, so could we, I guess, either remove the number from here so it's the same as everything else or make that clear in the definition?
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. Okay, and then page 12, sorry. Page 12, E2 parking spaces. And you can have the four parking spaces in a detached, detached from all the dwelling units, but they must be 10 feet from any dwelling. Would that be the six-foot thing that we talked about of different, you know, distances between internal buildings or would that stay 10?
You would have options there.
Isn't that something council needs to talk about?
If you wanted to separate the garages, there may be different building code when it comes to structures and garages. But this is something that you would, you would have the opportunity to discuss if you wanted to change it.
So this doesn't fall into the same six-foot distance we talked about last week?
I could look at it. I'd have to go back and look at it. Because if it were just a garage structure, it may be built to a different standard than a single-family dwelling just by construction, especially a separated garage, because it's not a habitable space. I I could look at it. If you wanted to reduce it, I would have to just confirm that it complied with fire. I, I could look at it, if you wanted to reduce it, I would have to just confirm that it complied with fire.
I mean, I guess maybe question for the rest of council, much like the other internal things, I'd like to see that be the minimum, you know, fire requirement.
Okay, let's go around, so we've gone with the six feet between the interior. Spaces between residences, we've reduced that to six, and the question is, do we, if we have a separate garage? Do we also want to reduce that to six feet like all the other dwellings on the interior spaces? If it's allowed by code, if Dustin goes back and fire code says, you, you just can't do that with that kind of a building, well, we can't. But if we can reduce it, do we want to reduce it? That's the question. Thoughts, Megan, are you saying, yeah, you're saying six feet, Megan, is that correct? Okay. And Gladys?
Yeah, I support six feet, if it's not possible, then it's not possible.
Okay, so Megan and Gladys are both six, okay. I mean, who knows how a developer might be able to configure it, because it's a parking garage, but. It might be beneficial to make it six. Others? Tim, Tim, you're for six feet, you're okay with six feet if it can be, okay? Uh, Mark, did you say yes, or you?
Yeah, if we, if we move the other one to six and this one is still safe at six, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay. And trying to look here, Jessica?
Yeah, I guess that's consistent. I liked the ten feet, but. I could go along with the six.
Okay, Eric?
I'd rather the ten, but it sounds like there's votes for six.
Okay, and I also am for six if it is feasible by fire code. So we have the majority for six feet on that, Megan?
My, my third one is on page fourteen of the packet, in H one, second paragraph. It says unenclosed front porches, patios, attics and basements that are not occupiable, comma stairs, comma. And unenclosed decks below thirty inches in height shall not be calculated as gross floor area. And then earlier we defined floor area is. Stairs, unenclosed stairs are not part of floor area, but enclosed stairs are, and I guess it's hard for me to read this one and get that same answer. And so I'm wondering if there's a way to. Clarify that if I, if I read the first definition right, or if this one is right, and I. I might not be making sense when I'm asking.
I, I understand what you're asking, it's, it, it feels like conflicting code, because you can't tell. Which, does it mean something?
I'm reading, I'm reading this one as that any stair doesn't count as floor area, and that's not how I read the other definition. So is there a way to?
Where is the other definition? I wanted to look at that. Do you remember?
It is on. Page six of the packet and definitions, second definition is floor area. Where it explicitly says unenclosed stairs that are exposed to exterior elements and not conditioned or excluded from floor area. Which I then read is that, you know, enclosed. Condition stairs would be part of floor area calculations.
Is that correct, Dustin?
Yeah, internal stairs would be in conditioned space, if it had floor area, we would count it one time. So if there was airspace above it, it's not floor area. But if there's floor area above stairs, we would count that.
But you only count it once?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, so I guess on fourteen, if we could clarify which stairs are not calculated as gross floor area.
I'm assuming this means stairs that are exterior of the building, is that correct, Dustin?
That's correct, exteriors don't get calculated, but we, we could make a couple of language tweaks for, to that effect, if that's suitable to everyone.
Yeah, I think it makes it clearer if we, if we. Define that this is an exterior staircase, not an interior staircase.
But if it's the stairs to an uninhabitable basement or attic, that's sort of the gray area in this, in this language. So I would.
I guess, yeah, so I'm gonna leave the code language to Dustin, but some sort of clarity would be great, because I. If I, I mean, and I'm not a developer, but if I was reading this, I would. Potentially read it wrong, which seems counter to what we're trying to do.
Good point, Mark, on the, it could be to an uninhabitable. Basement or attic. Not too likely, but possible. Because you might be using. The square footage under those stairs. For instance, if it went to an attic. You would count those stairs as heated area under the stairs. You know, as whatever, storage or heated area, if it wasn't enclosed under the stairs. It's a little bit vague.
We, I, I'll provide some, some. Better information or some clarification on that. I, I know of other, definitely have a staircase language in it.
Thanks. Thanks for pointing those out, Megan, that were a little bit ambiguous. If, if we're doing the code and we can't understand it, others are be doing the same thing, thanks. Anyone else, other things in here?
Mark, didn't you have something?
I don't. I don't think so, I do want to understand the process, how, you know, where, how does this meeting proceed to get? Do we pass it with quote edits and then, but whenever you get to that gate, so.
All right, the only one I had was. Oh my gosh, I had it in front of me. Okay, it was the, the front porch. So. It's on page seventeen and eighteen. So on page seventeen, the very last, number four B, each dwelling unit shall have. A covered porch. Shall be at least sixty square feet. And it also has to be five feet, so basically it has to be at least five feet by twelve feet. Plus, it also, on the next page D. Fifty percent of the total front facing facade length. And I just have to say, and I, and I mentioned this to Dustin already. That, and I'm talking about a very, you know, a person that does very good designs of their homes, but our next door neighbor. Just put in some dwellings that have small front porches. Extremely tastefully done, it does, it's not sixty square feet. It doesn't go fifty percent across the dwelling. But it is an entrance that's covered and. I would hate to eliminate that kind of thing being done. You know, half the facade in five by twelve is a certain style, in my opinion. And I think this is a little bit too prescriptive, I guess that's my, my take on it. I think a covered porch of some sort for a welcoming area for people to come in, to get out of the rain, to. You know, be able to stand there and visit with a neighbor that's on the street, I think that's all a great idea, but saying it has to be sixty square feet, saying it has to be. Half the distance of the front of the house feels. Too prescriptive, so I wanted to see what others thought about that.
I would support, sorry.
Oh, oh, sorry, Megan and then Gladys.
Yeah, I guess on my, I, you know, I'm gonna harp on the same thing I've been saying all night or the last few meetings of. I want these to get built, I don't want to add a bunch of requirements we don't require in anything else, I want to have flexibility to fit with the site and the ability to do something that works. And will actually get done, so I don't need to be super prescriptive about this either. And I'm fine with changing it to something less. Necessary, I guess, that's, I don't know, that's the right word.
Gladys?
I, I too would support less restrictive language in here, specific to decks, covered decks.
Others? Jessica?
I guess it's a little hard to know what. The change would be, but in general, I like the language that is there.
Others, Mark?
I, I too like the idea of the front porch thing, if I was, if, if we had, if there were four for. Against this front porch, I would say. Change items B and D, but leaving. The, you know, the, is just enough for a door and someone to stand there, right, and. The. Front door must be, you know, have a covered space, that, that would be, I would be bummed if. If those two went away.
And the, and though, as I had suggested, that it was the square footage total sixty feet and the fifty percent of frontage, which were just exactly those two, Mark, that I thought were too prescriptive. I think the other ones are fine, I think requiring a front porch is fine, it needs to open onto the front porch, needs to be fi, at least five feet deep. You need to have one, I mean, I think those are all fine, I just, I just thought those two parts were too restrictive. Who do we have, Tim?
Thanks, Mayor, I would be supportive of being less restrictive.
And Eric?
I don't have strong feelings on this issue, Mayor.
Okay, you can go either way. Okay, all right. So. Myself, Megan. Gladys. And Tim. Are all for less restrictive, so we have four people. That are for less restrictive, eliminate B and D is what we would be talking about. That's all I had, anyone else have additional? Anything additional? Eric?
Yes, Mary, I, I don't think I'm gonna have any takers on this, but if you'll just allow me, maybe just sixty seconds, maybe make a comment, I.
Absolutely.
Over the last couple of few meetings, we've been sort of looking at these individual pieces of bark, and I've been. Wanted to get to a point where we're looking at the forest. And I have actually always thought today was the, the beginning of the discussion, but it's feeling like it's the end of the discussion, and the reason I thought it's the beginning of the discussion is. Only today we've had an opportunity to review, it was over like two hundred and fifty pages of. Public testimony that we were able to receive last week at about one thirty in the afternoon, I just wasn't able to get fully through that, I've gotten fully through that. And I guess the thought I'm having is, is one as to whether council should consider. A more graduated approach to this whole concept where we go through and evaluate. What we might call absorption capacity through different parts of the community. You know, for example, the parking issues are much more impactful, say in Columbia where there's only parking on one side of the street or. Streets with mailboxes along the street is different than other parts of the town. You know, the east end of town, it, it has very, very narrow roads, it might be different there than, say, west of Rand. Which is a whole empty canvas, it seems like there could be wide latitude for experimenting experimentation. You know, some of the comments I saw that people wrote in were concerned about historic homes, for example, being potentially placed at risk, there's nothing in this code to deal with historic homes. There was one person who commented on the possibility of tying this code to our transportation system plan, which has a very thoughtful approach to streets. And bike lanes, and how do we make sure that this code is implemented in a way that's consistent with that? And in any event, you know, the idea of a more graduated approach, which is a different approach than planning commission took. And we require us to evaluate a whole nother layer of potential complexity, now my, the vibe I'm getting is that this. That this idea probably isn't one that folks are, folks are interested in, but. I just, I feel like I'd be remiss without at least suggesting that, because again, there's really a possibility, this is the beginning of the process. Not the end of the process, and although the points were made many times, there's been so many public hearings, this is the first hearing. Before a body of elected representatives with a full record, or at least. I don't know if it's full, but a record from a public comment, and I'm just feeling like there's a thirst in the community to. Give this a more graduated analysis now. I started this comment by saying, I don't think there's even a room for a second on this, is my sense, but I just. You asked your honor for other comments, I'm feeling a desire for a more graduated approach, and I just wanted to. Share that view as unreceptive as it may, may be to the group.
Thank, thank you, Eric, we, we all have individual opinions and ways we look at things, and we need to hear those, so. Thank you for your, your suggestion, your opinion, that, that's what we're here for, for sure. Others? Uh, Tim?
Um, just, just a comment on Eric's thoughts there, that. I don't think anything that we do is not necessarily entirely final, so. You know, I think that there's always opportunities to amend things going forward. Which is why I kind of want to reiterate that. Having, you know, some type of check in, regular check in. To see how this going seems really important, so we can kind of. Approach it in kind of like an adaptive management type of approach. Where you're incorporating information coming in and then adjusting your path. Or path going forward if needed. So, you know, I, I appreciate that, I'm not sure that, you know. Whereas this particular process may be coming to an end, I'm not sure that, that it means that. The issue is necessarily ended, per se.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else? Anything specific? This is a. As, as stated on our cover sheet this evening. You know, staff has requested that council review this this evening and make a final recommendation for an ordinance. To be read April twelfth in two weeks. So. I want to see if we're, if we're ready to make a motion, if we don't have anything else specific on this. Okay, Gladys has got her thumb up, Mark's got his hand up, go ahead, Mark.
So. The majority asked for a rework of the parking. In front of building stuff, so how do we, how would we word a motion with respect to that? And this gets sort of my, just I don't. Are we? I, I just don't know, so I'm, I guess I'm asking for, how, how does it work moving forward?
Dustin, do you have any suggestions on that? Or maybe? Our legal or Rachel, I'm not sure who, but. So we want to move forward, but we don't have that defined exactly, so how do, how do we do that?
Well, I'd prepare all the amendments that were listed, including a suggested language for the component regarding parking. So I, I would insert that in the ordinance as well as the draft code, which you would have available in advance. And you have a number of opportunities to read that and or make amendments during that section. If the language comes out in the ordinance as drafted, that, that was not to your liking, or whether you get to respond to that. So you would, you would have the opportunity to review it at least twice.
Because we would have a first reading and a second reading, correct? Is that what, why you're saying that?
I, I presume, yeah, I presume you would have first and second.
Yep, Madam Mayor, um, I agree. The council has made a, a lot of, uh, amendments, big and small, to this, uh, package. And I think the council should, um, take a look at it once they're all crystallized and, and synthesized in a written form. And you can still tweak it at that point, but, um, it might be difficult for all of you to kind of, at this point, have a good feel for what the totality of it is like. And I think it would, you benefit from having, seeing a document with it all together and, and you'll see, oh, this doesn't really work. And you can, I think that would be a step forward.
So, so that sounds to me like we keep deliberation open until we see that? Is that the suggestion? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay either way.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because it's your, it's your council meeting when you reconvene and you have a, an ordinance before you to talk about it and decide if, hey, you know, this doesn't work, let's change this, this and this. So whether you call that deliberation or not, that's the reality of what you will do.
Okay, so even if we say we're making a motion to close the public hearing and consider the first reading, that means when we consider that first reading, we can make changes?
Yes. It'll be a public meeting. I mean, I don't know that the hearing is really closing. I mean, it's a public meeting and people are entitled to listen to your deliberations as you go through this.
Okay. Alright, um, would anyone want to, um, make a motion with it, with, you know, would be stating with the changes that we have come up with this evening? And the last meeting included.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and file number twenty twenty dash thirty seven. Then consider the first reading of ordinance twenty sixty-one at the April twelfth city council meeting, uh, with all the suggested amendments.
I second that motion.
Okay, Tim has made a motion to, um, close the public hearing on file twenty twenty thirty-seven and consider the first reading of ordinance twenty sixty-one at the April twelfth coun- city council meeting with, um, the suggested, uh, changes uh, from this evening and our last meeting. And Gladys has seconded that motion. Any dis- um, additional discussion? Okay, I'm going to do a roll. Oh, Mark?
Yeah, did, Kate, do you, I mean, I have, you know, a few soapbox things to, to talk about this, this code. Um, you know, not as much to us as to the public that's listening. I, I don't know if it's best done, uh, today or when we do the first reading. It, it's up to you.
Um, I, I don't, you know, i- I think it's fine either way. I mean, I think it's good that the public knows how we feel about what, you know, why we're making this motion. And I assume that might be what you're, what you're saying, um, is why, why we are making this motion and why we might be voting for it or against it. So I don't think it, it hurts to do that this evening, if you'd like to do that this evening. Um, I, I mean, we can do, if it's discussion, that's fine. Um, and I think people may want to have some, you know, give some input of what they want to say. You know, if you want to do it during discussion, it's okay. It might be more appropriate. Let's, if it's discussion item, let's discuss it. If it's not really discussion, it's, you know, you just want to make a statement. Maybe we can go through, make our motions and then people can make their individual statements afterwards.
And you, you're saying on the twelfth?
No, no, I mean, to, this evening, but after we would make a motion.
So we have a, there's a motion now, right?
Right, we have the motion on the table right now. So I was just asking for discussion.
Ah, I, I only, I only have soapboxy stuff.
Soapboxy, okay. Why don't, um, you, why don't we do that after, if, let's just do discussion right now. Any discussion? Okay, don't see any discussion. No one's putting their hands up. So I'm going to do a roll call vote. Tim? Gladys?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Eric?
Nate?
Mark?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
And chair votes aye. So the motion is passed and, um, our planning director will bring us back, um, our ordinance on the twelfth and we will look at that and, um, go through it. So now, if people want to make statements on why, why they, why they did what they did, if they'd like to do that, it's not necessary at all, but if you'd like to, uh, totally fine. This is a big, uh, this is a big thing we've been talking about and we've been talking about it for a long time. And so I think that, um, you know, warrants people saying something if they'd like to. Mark?
Yeah, thanks, Kate. Um, first of all, thanks to, you know, Dustin and his team and Rachel and her team for the tremendous amount of work that, that went into this. Um, this has been part of our council and public discussions for almost six years. Um, when we did the, the housing needs strategies in two thousand and fifteen, one of the three legs of the stool was addressing housings types and, and, um, and supply, the supply part of the equation. So, and, and through four different council configurations, we've on an annual basis said that this is what we want to keep doing. It's still important. It's still a high priority. And so here we are today, getting one of these key pieces done. So I, I think it's super cool. Um, it, is it, is it done, done? No, none of our code is done, done. Um, it will need to be tweaked when we, when we find out how it's being done, uh, you know, how it's being implemented. We're, we're going to make adjustments because that's just how things go. We, we, we learn, we adjust. That's what systems do. Um, and is it the last step in our housing things? No. You know, there's, there's lots of other things that we've talked about to complete our housing, uh, solution. Um, you know, we're going to continue partnerships for, for eighty percent and below and a hundred eighty to a hundred and twenty percent. We're going to continue to find carrots to make sure that these new housing types, to the extent possible, are, are affordable by people that live in the, you know, live in Hood River, because that's, that's sort of our goal. So, you know, it's just a machine and a beast that, that's going to keep getting better and better. So I, I think that it's really important to, for the people that are concerned about this to know that w- we are making sure that, that little adjustments will get done as they need to get done. And, and so that's the important thing as opposed to waiting for perfect. We never get there. So, um, I, I am, I'm extremely happy with, with us getting this done. Um, so, but thank you, fellow counselors. Thank you, staff. I think this is a big, this is a big thing. So.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Uh, Megan?
Yeah, I mean, I'd also love to soapbox, obviously. Um, and I, you know, a lot of it is very similar to Mark's stuff. I'm, I'm super excited we're getting something passed. Uh, and I'm, and I'm really hoping it works. Um, you know, big, big picture in, in all this public comment, there were multiple people that said that the current code is working or there isn't a problem, or we don't need to do this. Um, and I just, um, we, that isn't true. We have the data that says that isn't true. We heard many anecdotes during all this. This isn't true. I can tell you from my own life that that isn't true. Um, you know, we've got like fifty percent of the community has cosped and we have the data that we're getting older and mature and wider. We have the data that current residents and workers are getting priced out. We have the data that, you know, median income is not keeping up with rental or homeownership prices. Um, you know, even, even back in two thousand and fifteen during the housing needs assessment, I think at that time, there was a deficit of two hundred units for middle income folks in two thousand and fifteen that has clearly only gotten worse. Um, and so we need to do something, you know, in my mind, it is the, the clear definition of, of not changing anything and expecting a different outcome is the definition of insanity. Um, so I'm super excited we're doing this. Uh, you know, a- again, to, to some of the comments of this isn't going to solve it. Uh, it's not the silver bullet. There is, there is no one thing council can do or any city can do that is going to be the one solution to a problem that is this big. This is one puzzle piece in a very large, many-piece puzzle. Uh, we are working on, but, and much of those other things. We have plenty more work to do. I think we'll probably always have work to do, given this community. Um, but this will help, uh, or should help. And I'm hoping if it doesn't help, that we will make changes and it will help. Um, because currently, you know, this community is on a trajectory to just be a playground for the wealthy. And we will, you know, bus in our servants from, from quote unquote somewhere else, because we don't actually care how they're living or where they're living. Um, and that is not a community I want. I want this to be a community that is, uh, for everyone, that has a diverse range of people from all backgrounds, um, you know, at all ages, at all income levels, providing different benefits, both professionally and, and socially to this community so that we have a strong community and we have a strong economy. Uh, in order to do that, we need to be providing housing for all of those different people at the different life stages, at the different incomes, at the different family sizes. And missing middle housing is a huge part of that. We are, we need to be diversifying our housing stock and we need to be increasing it. Um, and so, yeah, my goals for this are that this housing code, uh, will create more housing that is more affordable than the existing stock that's being created. Uh, that's going to be an improvement. Uh, my goal is that this housing will create, uh, just more housing units than our existing code is creating, and that's going to be an improvement. Uh, and that this code will create more housing that's, that better meets the needs of the household sizes that we actually have in town, and that's going to be an improvement. And so, uh, overall, you know, this is, this is one step on a very long journey, but I think it's a hugely important one and I'm super excited we're giving it. And I'm, yeah, very thankful for all of the work that the, you know, staff and planning commission and the community has put into moving this forward.
Thank you, Megan. Um, anyone else? Gladys?
Wow, um, I mean, my peers have, have said a lot of what I wanted to, to speak to. So I'm trying to think of different ways of saying different things. And I want to start off with, uh, saying, if, if you own a home, you don't have a housing problem. Um, I want to repeat that. If you own a home, you don't have a housing problem. So there's definitely been individuals that own homes that are stating the problems that are going on in Hood River when, uh, they own a home. They have a roof over their heads. I want to thank Dustin. I want to thank Rachel. I want to thank the rest of city staff, our planning commission, to our building community, and of course, our community members. We've spent fourteen meetings over the last couple of months, uh, hearing strong support from local business owners that are struggling to retain employees because of the high cost of Hood River housing. We've heard stories of community members struggling to find housing. Um, ordinance twenty sixty-one is going to provide more diverse housing options for our workforce community, the nonprofit employees, the nurses, the business owners, and the retirement individuals, uh, that make up our community. Uh, the backbone of our community. It really is going to help with the missing middle. And as it impacts, as again, I mentioned, the backbone of our community. Uh, ordinance twenty sixty-one will not solve all of our affordable out housing problems, but it's a step in the right direction. Um, we have actually had a builder come on to our council calls stating that he is willing to put his company's investments, uh, to building housing. So, Mr. Kettler, I'm very eager and I look forward to a minimum of at least six of these dwellings on the unit that we just rezoned and approved for you. As my peers have mentioned as well, if this code isn't working, then we have the ability to address it. It's not written in stone that this is how it's going to stay forever, uh, but it is a step in the right direction. And I'm ready to see more houses, uh, being built that are going to, again, really benefit the workforce of our community. Um, as counselors, we all made a commitment to equity, uh, for our constituents, for our community, and I think we're doing just that today. So, thank you to the rest of my peers for hanging in these long nights and, uh, for getting this work done. I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, others? Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, I agree with, uh, all that's been said. Change is hard. And I really do appreciate all the concerns of the, the people that have wrote their many thoughtful letters to us. I also appreciate the concerns and the plight of people that really can't afford to live here, can't find, find a place to live here. Um, this is not a new problem for Hood River. I'm going to tell you that, uh, as of last week, I moved here twenty-eight years ago. Uh, when I first got here, um, I nearly turned around and left because I couldn't find a place to, to rent or live. Um, and, and so it, it's really been, it's been that long that, that this, uh, has been occurring. I, I literally could not find a place to rent in the river. Uh, so that was twenty-eight years ago. Um, with respect to, um, what we've been doing here and what the planning commission has been doing. I mean, this is a longstanding, long effort to make progress on this particular issue. Um, I'll echo the thought that, you know, is this code perfect? Probably not, but we're not going to find out what needs to be fixed, uh, unless we go through the D process of actually implementing it. Um, having said that, it's really important that we do track what it's doing and make sure that if it does need to be fixed, that we fix it. But, you know, having been on the planning commission, um, discussing this and been on council, it's been going on a long time. So, um, I really do appreciate, and there's been literally been, in my estimation, hundreds and hundreds of hours, uh, of volunteer time put into this effort. And not to mention all the time of the, the staff, uh, that's, you know, and all the hard work that's gone into that too. Um, so, um, again, I appreciate everybody's concerns. Um, I personally am committed to making sure that we track what's going on. Um, so we make sure that, you know, some of those, um, concerns are, are satisfied. Uh, and that, that we're, we're making sure that, you know, some of the, the worst case scenarios don't, don't occur. So, thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Tim. Does anyone else want to, uh, state anything this evening? Jessica?
I'll just say, I, I think it's all been said and I appreciate the eloquence of my fellow counselors.
Eric, did you have your hand up?
I did, if I could, Mayor. First, I just want to congratulate, um, the council on, on, you know, reaching a consensus on this. Um, and I, I say that sincerely. Uh, I did vote no. I, as I said, I had concerns, um, that sort of the market reality won't line up to deliver the results, um, that we're after here. Uh, but this is an experiment that, uh, the council has made. So I, I respect that and I congratulate you on your victory. I'd also like to, um, point out that, um, even though things didn't go my way, so to speak, uh, like I said, I would prefer to graduated approach. Um, Dustin, um, and staff was very responsive to the various questions I had. So, uh, I would also like to thank staff for answering, uh, several of my questions along the way. Uh, and looking beyond this, I, there's several things I'd like to just point out. I'm very proud of the council's approach to Rand Road. Um, and, uh, that's something that, um, I think we were all unanimous on pursuing that, and I'm proud to have been part of that vote. Uh, and trying to do various other things as well to deal with our housing problem. Trying to persuade apartment, uh, developers to build more apartments in town. That would be something I'd like us to continue to try to do. Also work regionally with, um, nearby areas to see what we can do as a region to, uh, improve our, um, housing availability. So, um, I did vote no on this. I guess I, I, I had my reasons, but, uh, I respect council's approach and I think staff as well. And I, I wish us all well. And I think what we all agree is the same goal, which is to, um, improve our community by having more housing available for all.
Thanks, Eric. I'm just going to keep my comments really short. I think that, that this, the changes we hope, we are hoping to get, I think are going to be very incremental. The things are not going to happen overnight. You know, if you look at the R1, the R2 and the R3 zones we have now, we have more single family homes in all of those zones than anything else. So even though you have a new code, it doesn't mean we're going to get middle housing in it. I mean, I think people think, oh my God, the whole town is going to be middle housing. Well, we have a lot of R3 zones that have single family homes in them and R2 zones that have single family homes in them. So things will not happen overnight. I think for me, this is a step towards equity. That's what this is for me. This is a step for, for trying to equalize things in some, in some ways. Over the whole town, not just putting it in one spot. Rand Road is a specific thing in one spot. This is equalizing everyone everywhere. And so I think that's why this feels good to me, although, you know, Rand Road is a great win too. So, you know, I, I like to echo the other counselors that voted for this. I, I agree with you, but those are kind of the top, um, things that takeaways that I just want to let people know. It will not happen overnight. And it's a step towards equity for me. So thank you so much. Um, it is now 8:52. We don't have too much more, so I'm going to just try and get us to push through here, you guys. We have a consent agenda, two OLCC permits and the fourth electric car sharp, uh, car share amendment. Um, does anyone want to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I would move we approve the consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion by, uh, Megan and a second by Jessica to approve the consent agenda. Roll call vote, Mark?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gladys?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Uh, mayor's call. Um, in our packet, you guys saw, um, a design for an art piece from Chaz Martin. He used to live in Hood River, uh, some years ago and he moved to Portland. And he, he called me and approached me and he, he's, um, has made this sculpture for a private party in a very small version, you know, two feet by two feet. And he is working to get a grant from the Oregon Community Foundation. They're giving grants, I think, to maybe 10 artists, up to $100,000 per artist. And he, he just felt that Hood River was near and dear to him and he would, he would like to gift this sculpture to our town. Um, which the, all the planning would be done. There would be a base installed somewhere. It includes all the costs. We don't have, we just have to have a space for him to put it. And I thought it was quite a striking, um, sculpture, you know? To me, it kind of embodies people doing something together. And right now he is applying for his grant from the Oregon Community Foundation. And what he would need from us is a letter stating that we would take the sculpture if he does it. And there's also, um, kind of a, uh, education piece that he does with this sculpture. And so I thought that, you know, that's a, that'd be a great idea. I suggested maybe he could even do it for a sense of place lecture for Hood River. If, if we decided we wanted to take this. So I just wanted to run it by everyone. You know, if, if we're, if we're good with taking the sculpture and the, uh, art community would help us try and pick a spot to put it. It has to put in, be put in a public space. It cannot be on private property. So what we would need to just say is yes, we will accept the, the sculpture from him. So I just wanted to see if everyone is okay with that. I didn't want to make a decision on, on my own on it. Um, so I think I have, okay, Eric, did you have a question or?
Oh, I just had a brief comment. And it's a thumbs up, but I had a brief comment about Chaz Martin.
Okay. Oh yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, I remember Chaz Martin as a young boy growing up in Hood River. He was just this, he very much involved in the community. Um, uh, very much an advocate in the arts world and was, geez, so he just had this persona. And I, and I could be wrong about this, but I'm about 90% sure that the welcome to Hood River wooden signs at the edge of town. There's, I think there's one by China Gorge and there's one, uh, by Les Schwab. I believe he made those shortly before, um, he was sucked into Portland. I remember Sheila Ford Richmond is someone who's very involved in the arts community. And I think she told me circa 1985 that Chaz Martin was just too good to be in Hood River and his career took him to Portland. Um, but anyway, he is, uh, he is an incredible artist. He was very much committed to our community in the eighties. And it just warms my heart to see him this many years later. Wanting still to give back to the community he loves in the eighties.
Yeah. Yeah, those were his signs. Those were his signs that he made. Yeah. Um, Megan?
And I, and Mayor, I know that as a child, I, that's the, that's an eight-year-old boy remembering something that's not an adult. So that's just for an eight-year-old boy to remember that is proof to how connected he was, uh, in the art world in Hood River in the eighties.
Yeah. Megan?
Uh, yeah, I, I am super supportive of this. Uh, this is not a conversation for tonight, but I guess I did just want to say I'd love to get a check-in on the, you know, potential locations before it gets installed, um, given, given the size of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think the art community will make some suggestions and, you know, it's going to be in a public space. So we'll have the final say on it. But I think they'll make suggestions and give us reasons why they would, you know, want it one place or another. But, um, as long as we'll take it, um, that's all he needs is a letter saying we would like to, we would like it and we will find a place for it.
Right, yeah. And I, free art, totally on board.
Yeah, okay. Okay, great. Um, so I have thumbs up from everyone, um, all counselors, um, for people that are listening and have said, yes, well, we want to take this art piece. So, um, uh, council call, um, that's all I have for this evening. Um, Eric, did you have anything?
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Gladys?
I do, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to recognize that yesterday, March 28th, was Minorio Yasui Day. Minorio Yasui, Yasui is a local hero. He was born here in Hood River in 1916. And in 2015, he was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom, which is America's highest civilian honor for challenging the forced incarceration of Japanese-Americans in concentration camps during World War II. And I just wanted to recognize yesterday as Minorio Yasui Day and to thank him for, um, his commitment to, uh, justice and civil rights for all.
Thank you, Gladys, for reminding us of that. Uh, Mark?
Yeah, I think his 100th birthday year, a few years ago, there were some really touching and powerful presentations and get-togethers in the community. So, um, I certainly second that. Um, I was just going to say congratulations to both the ducks and the beavers for making the Sweet 16 and the beavers for making it till the Elite Eight. So that was, that was pretty good. Or did they get beat last night? I don't know. But anyway, they did good. Uh, they both are on the way back to Oregon now though, so.
Um, Tim?
Uh, nothing much, more art, more music. That's what I said.
Okay. Uh, Jessica?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Okay, Megan?
Sorry. Uh, yeah, so I, this, and this maybe grows out a bit of, uh, some of the community conversation around the missing middle housing stuff, but there, uh, I heard a pretty strong community consensus that we, you know, that the negatives of second homes is, is larger than the, the benefits and like to discourage them in town. Um, and someone brought to my attention that there is a current bill going through the, the Oregon Legislature, uh, Senate Bill 852 that would end the mortgage interest deduction for second homes and those making over $250,000 a year. Um, and would, would take that savings and create an Oregon, uh, housing opportunity account that would fund affordable housing in the state. Of course, it's the legislature and there's a, can you get me?
You're, it's a little underwater.
Should I start over?
Okay, just, we got parts of it, but it's.
So Senate, a Senate bill that would end the, the mortgage interest deduction for second homes and those making over $250,000 a year. Um, and then would take that, that savings and create an affordable housing fund for the state. Um, so there is, you know, the, the timeline for legislative stuff is always terrible. So I think there's a, a hearing tomorrow or Wednesday. And I'm wondering if this is something that council would like to have an opinion on. Um, it seems like something that would be worth supporting, given the communities. Um, you know, again, what I heard is a pretty strong consensus about second homeownership in town. Um, but I wanted to talk to council and see if there's any thoughts.
Okay, so it's a, it's a house bill that needs a comment very quickly, like tomorrow or the next day. Um, and it's, um, to eliminate the interest deduction for second homeowners, basically, making over $250,000?
So to, for both second homes and for homeowners making more than $250,000.
Right. You, they, they would, you would still get the first 250,000 you'd get a deduction for, but the portion over 250, you wouldn't get a deduction for.
As someone who's never owned a home or done taxes for a mortgage interest deduction, I don't totally know.
Okay, I, I, I believe that was what.
Probably.
Yeah. Yeah. So, thoughts? Others?
Megan, did you see it was for first homes and second homes?
So it's for second homes, I think for all second homes. And then I think it is for first homes if you make more than the 250 a year. Is, is how I read it.
So what I was wondering is if it's, uh, for a mortgage that's over $250,000 or if it's for your income that's over $250,000?
I read it as income.
Income, okay.
Yeah, because I, I'm pretty much all mortgages are for over 250.
Could we just be vague and say second home buying impacts Hood River? And, and anything the legislature does to, um, both in, improve housing opportunities and reduce second homes is, is, would be something that we would like to see you working on? I mean, like that?
Yeah, given the timeline, I figured something vague of we, we support this or anything that would, you know, reduce incentives to buy a second home.
I mean, we, we heard that from a lot of people, um, that were even against the middle housing stuff. They're like, we don't want these to be second homes. That was, that was loud and clear, it seemed like. I'm, I'm okay to, to say support it, the bill.
I liked Mark's where it focuses on, you know, we, we are, we we don't want to encourage second homes and would appreciate that part of this bill. I feel like I need to see more of it to fully say like, heck, yeah. But, um, I think it, that vague statement about second homes would be good.
So, so a letter stating the support of the, the portion of, at least the portion of it that would not allow a tax deduction for the interest on second homes. Cause that would discourage you from getting a second home. I, I mean, I think there's people that are going to have workarounds on these things anyway, because they'll just do, they'll do a refi on their own home. And then they won't have to buy a second home. They'll just pay cash. So in some ways, it may help on a little bit, but some people will just refi their own house.
I think it's just to say we're generically supportive of things that reduce the competition from second home buyers in, in the community. And as opposed to, we like this tax bit versus that tax bit. So, you know? Yeah.
I agree with that.
Anyone else?
Assuming I could pick Mark's brain tomorrow, could I just draft up what I think will be a two or three sentence thing and?
Yeah. Yeah.
And kick it to Kate?
Yeah, you could, you could. You guys are that way. Should we send it to Rachel and then she could send it out or how?
Yeah, um, I mean, I, I will track it down. What I've heard is a general statement, um, against second homes.
And anything that would help curtail second homeownership so that people, they could be bought by people that are living here.
Well, or, yeah. I guess that makes sense. You know, but it really is kind of, the intent of it is really to kind of, uh, garner money from the second home owners to promote affordable housing. Right?
Yeah, because the money, the savings would go towards an affordable housing pot.
Right.
I have not seen this bill. I apologize, counselors. So, um, I'll, I'll want to read it first.
It just, it just came across us like today or, yeah. Okay. Um, sounds like we've got consensus that at least the majority are okay with saying something about the second home. A letter to that effect. Anything else, Megan?
Uh, no, just for my clarity, um, should I do something or Rachel, were you saying you wanted to take a stab at this?
I'm happy to take care of it, um, based on council's stated affordable housing or stated goals around affordable housing. That's what I think would be appropriate for staff to do. Uh, we have your council work plan with the goals outlined. We can restate those in a letter of support or in a letter referencing this bill. Again, really hard for me to comment, not even knowing what bill you're referring to, counselor. So, um, if you want to maybe send me the bill, that would be really helpful.
For sure, yep.
Yeah, I think our goals that, that we have are in line with, um, supporting this bill from what I've seen of it so far. But I've just barely looked at it too. But I think our goals are, our stated goals will fit.
Uh, so again, I think what, what staff could do is simply restate your goals in a letter. Um, if counselor, individuals counselors want to weigh in on a bill personally, that's of course something that, that you can do. Um, but the organization, if it's from the organization, then it would just be a restatement of, of the goals.
Okay. Well, maybe, um, Megan, you could send it to Rachel and Rachel could forward it to everyone. So that if anyone wants to do an individual letter, um, not from council, that you, you're welcome to do that.
I'll send that out. Thank you.
Great. Um, I think that's it. Did I miss anyone? I don't think I did. Okay, great. Thank you, you guys. Uh, we will see you April 12th. Great work. Um, thank you staff so much for getting us through all these months and getting us to this point, um, this evening. I'm so grateful for that. Appreciate it. Good night.